All right, we are reconvened from closed session and I'll ask our Clerk of the Board, Trustee Tom Fuentes, to read out any actions that were taken in closed session.
Thank you, Mr. President. We have four matters to report. On a seven to zero vote, the Board approved an extension of benefits for two years to faculty member who is on an unpaid leave of absence. On a seven to zero vote, the Board approved an unpaid leave of absence to a classified employee. On a seven to zero vote, the Board approved an unpaid leave of absence to a faculty member. And on a seven to zero vote, the Board approved a faculty member be allowed to continue to teach a community education class while on sabbatical. Those are the four items, all unanimous.
Thank you, Trustee Fuentes. And at this point, I'll ask you to rise while Trustee Jay leads us in the invocation, followed by Trustee Williams for the Pledge of Allegiance.
As I've visited the campuses around the districts, I'd just like to make a slight comment before the invocation. As I've visited the three campuses around the district this year, I've noticed just seas of cars at IVC and Salabac, which is wonderful. It's a problem we'll soon have at ATEP, where we opened this year with just 400 students last week. But I'm sure that very shortly, this will be remedied. And those students who are primarily in high-tech offerings and courses right now will multiply tremendously. There's between 17 and 18 million students in colleges in this country. And 6 million of them are in community colleges. Several million of them, between 2 and 3 million in California alone, which of course has the largest community college system. The thing that impresses me most about community colleges, we are constantly getting heat about the number of students that transfer out of here and other community colleges. And very frankly, the California State University system, which is a very large system, not only includes San Diego and the two Cal Pollys, and Chico, and Fresno, and Bakerfield, and another 10 or 15 of them, why, 2 out of 3 students that are enrolled in that system have started in community colleges. And in the UC system, which is smaller in terms of total enrollments, but still has about 10 campuses now, I believe, counting the College of Physicians and Surgeons, which used to be connected with Berkeley, but it's in the San Francisco area, they have 1 out of 3 students that they are training who began in community colleges. So, community colleges do a tremendous job. I've probably been part of that system for 39 years. And now, just for a brief invocation, dear heavenly Father, we thank you for the marvelous country we live in. We also thank you for the marvelous state in the South County of Orange, where we live and run the South Orange County Community College District. In South Orange, what I wish to do is to ask you, dear heavenly Father, to please bless and to protect and to serve our students so that they achieve every possible academic and personal success. I would also ask that our staff and their teaching of these students, whether they are classified, professorial, or other help around the campus, that they also are successful in every way possible. Finally, a change of pace, dear Lord. Please bless, protect, and nurture the 160,000 men and women that we have in Iraq and Afghanistan. Bring them home safely. Thank you.
(inaudible)
Let's allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with the liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. At this point, I'll ask Grace if there are any members of the public that have submitted requests to speak regarding open session items. Hearing none, then, we will proceed to Board reports. And we'll start with Trustee Jay.
No Board report this evening. Thank you, Mr. President.
Okay. Trustee Padberg.
Yes, since the last meeting, I've attended several district functions and college functions. The reception for George Boggs, the reception for David Long, and the opening sessions for both colleges, the president's opening sessions, as well as the Association luncheon, and recently, the Salabac College Foundation meeting. I also attended the Salabac Theater's South Pacific production and thoroughly enjoyed that. That's all my report.
Thank you. Trustee Fuentes.
Thank you, Mr. President. No report.
Trustee Wagner?
Thank you, Mr. President. Very briefly, my thanks to the Chancellor and administration for the opportunities recently given to us to meet both state and national education leaders, mentioned by Trustee Padberg, David Long, the California Secretary of Education, and George Boggs, who we also met at a reception and then was a speaker at the opening session. I had a chance to attend the Chancellor's opening session and want to say welcome back to everyone. Good luck, and may all of you have an absolutely wonderful semester.
Very good. Since all of the comments I would have otherwise have made have already been made by my fellow trustees, no additional report. Trustee Melchiker.
I just briefly want to echo some of the remarks made by my fellow trustees. I attended the Chancellor's opening session and both of the college presidents' opening sessions and listened to many of the deans talk and listened to many of the educators talk. And I feel very pleased about a very good start of the semester and wish everyone a very, very good semester and good work. It looks like we'll have good works from all of you. I also want to thank the Board sincerely for adjourning the last meeting in memory of my mother-in-law. We do miss her, and it really meant a lot to us. So, thank you so much.
Thank you. Trustee Williams.
Oh, just a brief report. I just wanted to welcome all of the students and staff and faculty, administrators, everyone back for the beginning of what we hope is a very good school year. We're going to pass a budget tonight that's a solid budget. It's good for everyone, and we can serve the students, and especially those at ATEP. We'll hear more about that later, but welcome to the 400 new students at the ATEP campus in Tustin. Thanks.
Student trustee Renard.
I just had a quick update. I did attend the student trustee orientation a couple weeks back. Oh. Hello? Okay. I did attend the student trustee orientation a couple weeks back, and we had an array of topics that we covered, so it was very insightful. I also took a detailed tour with the Chancellor of the theater, the IVC Theater, and also a very detailed tour of ATEP led by Bob Corbeki. Thank you again. So, I'm very excited about ATEP, now seeing it physically. So, thank you.
Thank you. And Chancellor's report, Chancellor Mather.
Thank you. First of all, I'd like to thank all the trustees who have been busy attending a number of college and district events that have been mentioned here. I appreciate your taking the time out of your busy schedule to do so. Also, I'd like to welcome back all the faculty and staff for a new and exciting academic year, and thank in advance for all the good work that people will be doing this year. I would like to take this opportunity to welcome a new addition to the IVC administrative team, Dr. Craig Justice, who is the new Vice President for Instruction at IVC.[690.37][690.37](applause) And finally, I'd like to mention, thank you, Craig, finally, I'd like to mention that at the Chancellor's opening session, it was a pleasure to recognize, on behalf of the Board, and some of the Board members were able to join us there, faculty members for their many, many years of service, some with 5 years, some with 10 years, 15 years, 20, 25, 30 years of service, and Bob, were there any 35 years of service also? As I recall, maybe there were some. So, now, we have some administrators and managers also in the district who have been serving for a number of years. But these are all paid folks who are recognized for their service for these students. And each year, we also recognize trustees for their years of service. These are essentially the unpaid folks. They're basically volunteers. They get as small a stipend. So, it's even more important and more special to recognize trustees who complete, as they do, 5 years, 10 years, 15 years, 20 years of service to the Board. And we have recognized several Board members along that line in the past. But tonight, I'd like to take this moment to recognize a member of this Board who has completed 15 years of service to this district. Thank you, trustee John Williams. I'd like to present something to you.[781.32][781.32](applause) This is a service pen with the district logo on it for his 15 years of service. Congratulations, and thank you.
Yes, let me also echo my congratulations to you as well, Trustee Williams, for your many years of loyal service to this Board. With that, we'll turn to any Board requests for reports. Have there been any submitted?
None.
Any reports that any of my fellow trustees would like to share? All right, very good. And we'll move along to the consent calendar. There has been one change to the consent calendar. We will be pulling 4.9.
Altogether.
Altogether. And we'll not be considering that item tonight. So, let me ask, start with Trustee Padberg for any other items.
Yes, I'd like to, that was one I was going to pull, so I don't need to do that. 4.15, 16, 17, and 18. And I will just state that, except for 18, I'm pulling those three items because they do impact financially persons who are here on the Board and would be voting for it and be inappropriate.
All right, very good. Any other trustees wish to pulling any other items off the consent calendar? We pulled 4.15, 16, and 17. All right. If not, may I have a motion to approve the consent calendar?
18.
Oh, you are pulling 18 as well? All right, very good. All right. Is there a motion to approve the consent calendar, so moved by Trustee Padberg and seconded by Trustee Jay? Please vote on approval of the consent calendar with those items pulled. And that's approved unanimously. So, let's start with item 4.15. Okay, moved and seconded, and that is the authorization to pay Trustee Melchiker for missing the July 23 Board meeting. Looks like there's no discussion on this item, so let's vote.
Can I vote for that? Okay.
And that's approved unanimously. All right, next is item 4.16. Okay, moved and seconded. This is to approve compensation for Trustee Fuentes, who missed the special Board meeting on August 15. Let's vote on this item. And Trustee Fuentes, have you tried again?
I'm trying to abstain.
All right. Why don't you, for this, we will recognize your abstention, but put down a yes vote on your, so we can get this to count. There we go. All right, let the record show that is approved on a 6 to 1 vote with also affirmative vote from student trustee Renard and one abstention from Trustee Fuentes.
And did Marsh not want to do that?
No, I voted yes. Oh, is there a conflict? Does anyone know?
No, I don't think there's, there's a problem. All right. Next is item 4.17, which is again approval for student trustee Renard for missing the August 15, 2007.
Second.
All right, moved and seconded. Let's vote on this item. And that is approved unanimously with one abstention from student trustee Renard. Very good. Next item is 4.18, which is trustees' requests for travel to conferences. And Trustee Padberg, did you wish to address this item?
Yes, I do. One of these conferences is out of the country. And I'd like to know how these conferences were selected and what went into this process.
Okay. Chancellor Mather, you wish to address this item?
Generally, we select the conferences either because one of the trustees has indicated an interest in attending this conference, or some trustees may have attended this kind of conference in the past, though they have not had opportunity to indicate interest in attending it this time.
And can we assume that that's within the guidelines that were established for trustee travel?
Yes.
All right, very good. Trustee-
I could follow up, please.
Yes, Trustee Padberg.
I'd like to have, when these items are presented for our consideration, the trustee who requested that particular trip identified on the agenda item.
Since we have the guidelines for the trustees' travel and attending the conferences and so forth, perhaps if the Board is interested in entertaining Trustee Padberg's suggestion, we can, I can bring back those guidelines back to the Board for discussion. And those guidelines can certainly be modified if the Board so desires.
Yeah, I guess point of order on that, and that is, it seems to me that that would require a separate motion that would call for approval by the other members of the Board.
I'd like to make that motion.
Hold that thought for a minute. Let me, there's a couple people waiting in line to speak. The first is Trustee Williams.
Well, if the issue is the Canada trip, I get a lot of emails and I get brochures in the mail. After you just saw 15 years on the Board, I forward a lot of information on seminars and conferences directly to the Chancellor. Most of them I don't attend. But if I think they're pertinent to this Board, then I'll forward them. The World Conference on E-Learning, that's the Association for Computers and Education, that's a subgroup. I'm not going to Canada, but I forwarded that several months ago to the Chancellor as an FYI for the Board, for those that would be interested. So, if I get the information, I'm going to pass it on. I haven't requested to go to any of these. I don't forward CCLC things anymore because it turns out they're on the same mailing list I am. So, in this case, I did forward the one for the World Conference on E-Learning. I've attended their sessions in different cities. But I'm not going, I may not even make any of these, I'm not sure yet. But I think we should share the information with our fellow trustees and the Chancellor. Doesn't mean we're going to attend them. Doesn't hurt to put it on there. I don't know. In 3 weeks, I don't think anybody can plan a trip to Canada realistically, but it's available, it's out there if we need it.
Trustee Padberg.
Well, I think that we need to have as much information as possible when we're going to approve something. So, how this item has been brought forth and why it should be approved, I think should be a part of any agenda item that comes to us, not just a simple date with the proposed amount and the conference identified. There are tons of conferences. So, any number of times, we might select a conference that's not here. Doesn't mean that they should not be allowed to go to it. So, it's very confusing.
Okay. Trustee Williams?
Well, the question is how this got here. I would say it was an email that I forwarded to the Chancellor because I'm on their email distribution list. That's how it got to the Chancellor. The Chancellor brought the item to the Board. So, that's how it got here. And I think if trustees see things that are pertinent to this Board, and for administrators, I forwarded a lot of information to the Chancellor. Study sessions, conferences, seminars, that aren't appropriate for trustees, but they're more appropriate for administrators or faculty, I also forward those to the Chancellor.
Could I just follow up with that? I think it's not so significant as to, well, I do think that if a trustee is asking for the approval, that should be identified. But why should we be approving it, and what is there of benefit here besides just a title?
Chancellor Mather.
In fact, with respect to the conference in Canada that has been mentioned, I believe that there is a trustee who has expressed an interest in attending this conference.
Trustee Padberg.
Well, it indicates in the parentheses that there are 5. I assume that means there are 5 who are interested.
It means 5 days, 15 through 19.
5 days, okay. Okay, so you only have 1 trustee wanting to go.
Yes.
Okay, and you can't identify that person? I think as a matter of public record, the public needs to know. The taxpayer needs to know how their money is being spent.
If you are making the motion of the trustee who wishes to attend these conferences to be identified, I'll support that motion in the interest of transparency.
I'm making the motion.
Okay, is there a second? If not, I'll second that motion. All right, Trustee Wagner.
A little clarification with respect to, for example, this trip to Canada. We understand trustee Williams forwarded it to the Chancellor. It's on here, but it's, but there isn't necessarily any trustee who specifically says, "I want to go to this," or any of the other conferences. And so, with respect to this motion that we're now debating, I can foresee a circumstance where something gets on this calendar without a trustee particularly saying, "Hey, I want to go to that particular conference."
Just for clarification, as I understand it, there are trustees that wish to attend all?
What, all right, then what's-
One or more trustees that wish to attend each of these conferences.
Okay. But that need not always happen. And when that doesn't happen, I'm not sure what the motion, how the motion gets addressed. And I guess my point would be to follow up with Chancellor said earlier, that this is more appropriate for him to bring back the guidelines. So that if something is not in the guidelines, or we want to tweak the guidelines, then we take that step globally rather than dealing with it piecemeal here with respect to, you know, one particular trip that someone may or may not want to go to. I think it's a much better way to handle the policy of trustee travel.
Okay. Chancellor Mather, you wish to respond to that?
Yes, I just wanted to clarify that what I mentioned earlier was that either a trustee has expressed an interest in attending one of these conferences, or trustees have attended some of these conferences in the past, especially, for example, CCLC conference. This is a California-based conference that several trustees in the past have attended. So, I bring some of this to your attention because those guidelines that we have for trustee travel says in there that we encourage trustees to attend at least 1 conference a year. So, I think in the context of this discussion, we need to keep in mind that we don't do anything that will stifle any given trustee from attending conferences. It is very important in these changing times that we stay abreast of new developments in all sorts of areas that the Board makes decisions in.
Okay. Trustee Padberg.
I think that it's very interesting that there's such interest in not showing who is interested in the travel or the trip to these conferences. I think it's very clear there's no trustee that's interested, but you want to bring it to the Board, you say that. Just put that instead of a name. No one's interested in this trip at this time.
If I may.
Sure. Chancellor Mather.
I don't need to indicate which trustee unless the Board directs me to. But the trustee who may be interested in attending the conference, nobody's stopping their trustee to volunteer that information if he or she so chooses.
Trustee Williams.
We just passed a number of items on the consent calendar, spending hundreds of thousands of dollars. And we've been on this thing close to 15 minutes, and I think we're spinning our wheels. This is a little outrageous. My passport expired 10 years ago. I'm not going to Canada next month.[1560.13][1560.13](laughter) We need to move on. We're dues-paying members of CCLC. I may try to make one or both of those. I don't know yet. But I think we're really wasting time here. If you looked at all of the past conferences and seminars we've approved for travel, most of them, no one attended. It's available, it's there, doesn't cost any money to approve for those that wish to attend. And those that do wish to attend, always work through the Chancellor and his office and let them know, the staff members know you're going to go. So, let's move on. I don't want to call the question, but this is really getting out of line.
I do want to say a word here, too, and that is, I agree with the notion that, you know, we're making these conferences available, if you will, by highlighting them as upcoming conferences that trustees can approve. At the same time, I also believe that we need to be as transparent as possible, and to the extent that there are trustees that are attending different conferences. I don't think we should have any objection. In fact, I think those trustees should be applauded that attend those conferences to try and improve their outside skills. So, you know, I would have no problem in indicating, in some fashion, whether it needs to be part of this item or some other item, trustees that have signed up and are attending outside conferences. I don't think that's a bad thing at all. And Trustee Padberg?
Well, and I, that's exactly the way I feel, and it's just a matter of putting this in front of the public. And you got this item on to ratify or approve, maybe it just needs to come back and to be on the agenda if a trustee has in fact traveled. We've never done this in the past. Board has just asked for certain travel trips, and they've been approved. Then they come back to the Board after the fact. So, yeah, it's perhaps much to do about nothing. There is a motion on the floor. I'll remind the Chair.
I moved it.
Yes, there was a motion actually for approval of the item first.
First, you made the motion, or I made the motion.
You said I did.
The item-
Yeah.
Bring the name on the item.
You made an amendment.
Yes, that's true. But there was no, I don't believe that there was a second to trustee Williams's motion.
I'll withdraw the motion so we can move on.
Okay.
News are being run at 7, all right?[1719.01][1719.01](laughter) All right. I do believe that there was a motion on the floor, but I'm
going to withdraw my second to that motion because, because I wasn't clear that there weren't specific trustees that were attending these specific conferences, except for one.
Yeah.
All right. So, I think the, what I would support is approving this item tonight. And, but I'm going to look for a trustee to make that motion.
Approval.
All right, moved and seconded. And Trustee Padberg, if you wish to make the motion that when a trustee attends a particular conference, that that be disclosed as an agenda item, I would support that additional motion.
Do you want that now's amendment, or do you want to vote now and then have that as a second?
You're my parliotarian.
You can't make a second amendment, a second motion because it's not an agenda. It would have to be an amendment to this.
Okay. It sounds to me like it would be an amendment to the motion. So, let me ask-
I'll make that amendment.
-Trustee Williams if you will accept that amendment. So, let me ask trustee Williams if you will accept that amendment to your motion.
No, and here's why. As I've advised the board and the chancellor before, there was a new law that took effect January 1st, that when elected officials travel, you must come back to your next meeting of the legislative body and report on the conference you attended. So, this is moot, okay?
It's already a.
It's already there. And every time we go to a conference, any of us travel where we've paid for meals or travel, we always come back and give a report. It's in the law. So, it's already covered.
Thank you for clarifying that. Trustee Jay?
Oh, kind of.
Trustee Padberg?
That would be after the fact. It might be nice that the public knows how the money is being spent before the fact.
Okay. Well, you have, you do have the right under this approach to not approve a particular conference.
I understand.
All right. Very good. We are going to vote on the motion. Trustee, yes, okay. Approved unanimously. Very good. That completes the consent calendar, and we will now move to item 5.1, which is approval of the final budget for 2007, 2008. And I'll ask for the chancellor to present this item.
Thank you, President Lang. Tonight, we are presenting the final district budget for board consideration and approval. This budget has been developed consistent with the board-established budgetary guidelines. Board has seen the tentative budget before. The legislature had passed the budget. The governor has signed the budget. So, this budget, again, has been prepared consistent with cost of living adjustment and other provisions as adopted by the state for community colleges. District reserve is set at 6.5%. There has been faculty and staff participation in the development of this budget through the district resource allocation council. I understand that there are some minor revisions in the budget that the deputy chancellor will talk about. So, with your concurrence, President Lang, I'll turn it over to Deputy Chancellor Portner to outline some major key provisions of this final budget.
When this budget was written and put in the agenda, there was no state budget. And as just mentioned by the chancellor, since that time, the legislature has come back, they've acted, the governor has signed the budget. After much speculation that education may be cut, it was not. And as a result, the budget that we have here is almost exactly the same thing that we brought to you in June. There's very little change in the final budget from the tentative budget, and for that reason, there's no PowerPoint presentation made. I know you regret that. Next year, tentative time, we'll make up for it. The sheets that are in front of you are only there to correct one number, and that's on the first page that you have there, under capital outlay. That number is 310,000 larger than what's in the book that you have. That's the only change. So, we just wanted to be sure that when you adopted a budget, you had in your hand the one that we should have on record. The total revenue of all the funds, just a couple of highlights, not many, is 391 million. In the general fund, the total revenues are 213 million. The calculation for unrestricted operating revenue, which is SB 361 revenue, is 115 million. That's within just a few thousand dollars of what we had in the tentative budget. There is a little more in the beginning balance in the general fund, and some of that had to do with when we closed the books, there was some additional receipts and mandated costs and interest and lottery. And Saddleback had a little larger ending balance by about a million dollars. The COLA is 4.53. Other than that, the only thing that I'd point out for you to look at sometime, if you didn't before tonight at your leisure, is on page 17, there is a list of capital outlay projects that are in this budget that will be worked on in this year. And on pages 14 through 15 are the basic aid projects that the board has adopted, and you'll see what's being worked on there. Other than that, it's the same as the tentative. I recommend you approve the budget.
Okay. Thank you, Deputy Chancellor Portner. We do have several trustees that either have questions or comments. We'll start with trustee Wagner.
Thank you, Mr. President, and thank you to Gary and his staff for putting this all together, and thank you to the taxpayers for very graciously and generously funding it. I had a couple of comments that I want to leave with the board. Not that I don't intend fully to support this, the budget I do. But specifically, I want to raise a question regarding the budget development guidelines on pages three and four. Now, I understand these are our guidelines, and we can change them pretty much at any time. The item that caught my eye, and I think I've raised this before, but I want to raise again, is item five on the top of page four, where it states, "Any college or district balances existing at the end of each fiscal year, either positive or negative, will result in an equivalent adjustment in the allocations in the subsequent year." And I'm concerned that that maybe sends the wrong message. Sends the message that you need to spend every penny this year so that your allocations don't suffer next year. And I'm not sure that's the message that, as a board, we want to be sending to the colleges. So, I raise the question, or maybe I'm reading that wrong. Gary, you look like you want to say something. Maybe I'm reading that wrong, but that's, appears to me to be what it says.
There's a history to this, and then I'll briefly tell you that. And what it is, is that in the past, sometimes the college ending balances were negative. And then, for a few years, they would go, the college would go forward into the next year without having to make up that negative balance. And then, we adopted this change that said if, let's say, a college may be in a negative balance by half a million dollars. This would say they start the next year, beginning with a negative half a million dollars. On the other hand, if there are half a million dollars to the good, that gets carried forward for their use in the next year. They don't lose it. So, there's not an incentive to spend it or lose it. No?
Yeah, I think I know exactly. Basically, what you're saying is, is that the colleges do not get penalized.
They aren't penalized, that's correct.
For the fact that they didn't spend out all of their budget. But in fact, it gives them, if you will, some cushion or contingency for the following year. They're also not penalized for having not spent the budget relative to their next-year budget. Is that correct?
That's correct. But they are penalized if they spend more money than they have in a given year.
Correct. Because then they're starting out.
That gets carried forward with them the next year.
Then what's the adjustment, the equivalent adjustment? If they have a positive balance, what's the equivalent adjustment?
It goes into their beginning balance in the next year.
Do we still, we were going to fund them with X dollars. Do we fund them now with X dollars minus the positive balance? Or is it X dollars plus the positive balance?
Plus the positive balance.
And that's what this says?
Yes. We can reword it if you'd like.
If that's what this means, then fine. I had one other quick question. As I compared the text to the pie charts, actually, two other issues on the same point. It appeared to me that the IVC budget talks about 89.1% committed to salaries and benefits, and the pie chart shows me 88.94.
88.94 was the IVC percentage versus 83.97%.
No, no, well, I understand that. I'm going to ask why they're out of whack in a minute, but what I'm going to say is, and the number, and they're not, they're not far off, but we're talking about large dollar volumes here. And it's 89.1 in the written, and it's 88.94 in the pie chart. And I'm curious which is accurate, and I mean, I have no idea how much money that equates to. And Glenn, you look puzzled. I'm sorry. I'm on page seven, where it says 89.1%, and I'm on page 10, where there's the different figure, if that can be reconciled. And then, I am a little curious about the imbalance between IVC and Saddleback with respect to the percentage of salaries and benefits.
Well, that's a function of the way that the college budgets, and through the DRAC model, each college gets a given amount of money of revenue for the upcoming year, based primarily on past and expected enrollments. And there's some adjustments to that, not much. And so, as each college decides how much they're going to spend on salaries, and how much they're going to spend on maybe supplies or equipment or repairs, then that affects this particular chart.
But those are, those are contract amounts that are determined above the college levels, aren't they?
No. They're paid within the college allocation. You mean contract salaries?
Correct. Yes. Well, yes, all salaries, all contracts, all salaries, all benefits are decided at the district level with district contracts, aren't they?
You mean through district negotiations?
Yes.
Yes. That's correct.
All right.
But the payment of those, there is no district budget to pay for faculty salaries, say. The budgets are within the college itself.
I understand that.
Yeah.
But how do, if they're contractually obligated to pay, you know, a certain percentage of dollars to faculty, a certain percentage of dollars to, you know, faculty for benefits, how do we get out of whack?
Well, one variable would be how many people you have that you're paying. You know, the one, you're talking about the variable, how much do we pay? And that's the amount that is decided in the contract that's negotiated between the district and the unions. It's up to the college to decide the staffing that will be at their individual college. And that's another factor that's, plays out in that calculation. No?
Yeah, I've got you. No. No. All right. Thank you. Okay. I'm guessing also as to trustee Wagner's first comment, that perhaps you wrote the text before the final.
Well, the first part, there may be a disconnect, because that is written by college staff, and the chart is done by the district staff, and.
I'm guessing there might have been a difference between when it was written and what the final numbers were.
Could be. Could be.
Yeah. Not much, but a little bit.
Yeah.
Trustee Williams?
Yes. My comments were, number one, I want to thank the DRAC committee for all that you've done, and Deputy Chancellor Portner, once again. It's going to be my pleasure to move approval of the budget, but two things that caught my eye, also on the same pages that trustee Wagner pointed out, page three, items one and two, we have at least a 6.5% reserve, which is phenomenal. And item two, that's cause for celebration, because this district is going to be debt-free as of next June 1st. We need to really celebrate that. I don't think there's many districts that can claim that they're free of any indebtedness. So, that's the last COP payment, certificate of participation payment, it'll be paid off early. And trustee Wagner had a question, and I'll word this carefully. I hate to use the word older, but the faculty association folks maybe can help me out here. In the past, we've noticed that Saddleback College tends to have the more senior or older faculty members, more faculty members at the top end of the pay scale. So, if you compare Saddleback to IVC, you have a younger, less senior overall group of faculty. So, Saddleback is still the older, original campus. It'll be open 40 years next year. Got a lot of older faculty, top steps, so the average salary per faculty members between the two colleges, Saddleback is a little higher, I believe. Is that not still true?
Well, that would flip the numbers.
Right. It looked.
You were talking about the disparity between the two.
Is the average higher at IVC now, or has it, so it's changed then? Okay.
Yeah.
Looks like the demographics have changed.
I think that has changed. A couple of years ago, for instance, we had a retirement incentive for faculty, if you recall, and a number of more senior faculty retired. And I haven't done a study to see what the ages are today. We could look at that, but I suspect that's changed quite a bit.
Okay. So, it has changed, and then finally it caught up. Seems that way. But I did move approval of the item. Oh, yes, you did. Okay. Moved and seconded. Trustee Padberg?
We were notified in the chancellor's update of a problem with the 50% law. We've now dipped below the 50% requirement of having funds that go into the classroom. I'm assuming that salaries, of course, are figured into that. And I wonder if you could address that problem. We're going to have to apparently ask for a waiver from the state.
Okay. Yes, that calculation is part of closing the books in the report that we give to the state. It's one of the exhibits that we give. And there's a requirement that, of unrestricted funds of what's called the current expense of education, which is unrestricted funds, less capital outlay and transfers, that 50% of those total expenditures have to be spent on faculty salaries and benefits, and salaries and benefits of classified employees who work in the classroom under the direction of faculty members. Okay? So, that's a particular law. There's a number of laws dealing with hiring faculty. And in this particular year, we're closing the books at 49.65%, so just under the 50%. But nevertheless, it's under, and we have to file a waiver with the state. And there'll be, and a plan to remedy that. And so, we'll be back to the board at a future meeting to discuss that proposed plan.
And can you tell me how we got in that situation?
I think they're still analyzing.
I think we're trying to figure that out. We've noticed that over the past several years, that the percentage has been declining. And there was an effort made by, really concerted effort by Beth and David and Carol, who worked on this all year long to make sure our count coding was proper. They visited other community college districts and discussed with them the issues. Several of our other neighboring districts are very close also, and have been having problems in the last couple of years. So, we're trying to understand it more and what we need to do to change it. Part of the problem, I'm not suggesting it's the whole problem, but part of the problem is there is more and more requirements on the part of the state to provide services to students, services other than teaching in a classroom. For instance, outside in this calculation that doesn't benefit, as far as this calculation's concerned, is the salaries of counselors and librarians hurt this calculation. The salaries of all support staff hurt this calculation. If we beef up our efforts to market our programs to get more students, that effort hurts this calculation. Everything we do that is not in the classroom, which is the salary and benefits of the faculty or the classified aid, is detrimental in this calculation. So, I suspect that as we go year by year, and there's more and more demand for these kinds of services, that that has a big impact. Now, with regard, what's even more baffling is that we are, in this past year, in the past fall, we were 24 full-time faculty above the full-time faculty obligation. That's another measurement of the state of what our requirements are. So, the number that we're required to have, we have 24 more. In addition to that, when we reviewed the average salary paid, ours is the fourth highest in the state. So, we have 24 more than we're required to have of full-time faculty, and we also pay the fourth highest average salary. Why is there a problem? Well, that's what we're trying to learn.
That should actually help the situation.
One more thing.
Yes.
That's classroom.
That's right. So, intuitively, it's hard to understand.
Bottom line is, is to stay tuned, because you will be hearing more about this.
And I guess maybe this is just a rhetorical question at this point, but there's nothing you can point to then in the current budget here in front of us that would identify the problem.
It's a whole combination of things.
Well, I just wanted him to answer it, if you don't mind, because he is our fiscal officer.
Yes. And in addition to that.
Yes, and I'm your board president.
You're only our CPA, not president, but he's in charge here.
One other point I'd make, going along with trustee Padberg's question, is there's also nothing else in this budget that would remedy the situation, because the calculation was done after this budget was prepared. See? So, it'll take two more years before we could probably make inroads into that.
Thank you.
Trustee Jay?
Couldn't you tell?
Couldn't you just hire four or five more full-time faculty? Wouldn't that do it? I'm sure it would. Or instructional aides in the classroom would count for that classroom expense, too.
Right.
Yeah. By the way, my reading of the difference between IVC and Saddleback is that, yeah, Saddleback has had a lot of senior faculty retire with a big retirement that we had two years ago and another big one five years or six years before that. But also, both schools, even though the enrollments are considerably higher in one than the other, have a VP of Instruction. Both schools have a VP of Students and that goes through all of the other administrative positions. So that forces IVC's money spent on salaries and benefits up because by golly, you're going to have a VP of Instruction, no matter how big the college is, and you're going to have a VP of Students and so forth with other positions similar to any college environment. So I don't see a terrible problem with the fact that IVC is now 5% or 6% higher than Saddleback.
With regard to the last point of, which I think you were making, is that each college has a certain minimum level of staffing that they have and so it might make IVC a higher percentage.
Sure.
In the last funding bill, SB 361, the state did something to try to address that problem.
Oh, they did.
And they added what's called a foundation amount. So IVC now gets, maybe Beth can help me back there, I think it's 800,000 more than it used to under the old formula.
Okay.
In order to address that problem.
So that makes it more lopsided with IVC having a higher percentage, too. I see that. Okay, okay.
Thank you, trustee Jay, for your proposed solution. I'm sure if I asked Mr. Hagerty over here for a possible solution, he'd be able to offer me one as well, but since he didn't ask to be recognized.
Is that a chance to speak, Mr. President?
Sure.
I would go along with trustee Jay's suggestion in regards to hiring more faculty. I'd also recommend that we are currently in negotiations and a salary increase to help with the 50% rule would be very desirable.
Did you like the fact that I was able to give you that plug, Professor Hagerty?
I appreciate that very much.
Yes, I'm sure you do. Let's see, trustee Williams.
Well, it's been some time since I've heard about this particular statute, but it's, and I'd like to ask the chancellor to address this, but it's really sad when you say hire faculty, do you want to hire classroom faculty to the exclusion of librarians and counselors? That's not really fair. Maybe the statute needs to be changed because there's a lot of our students that really need the counseling services and the librarians. I mean, so this is really deceiving, just for the fun of it, maybe it's too late to request a report. If we could count counseling and librarians who are faculty members, I'd like to see what the number would be. I know the law doesn't allow it, but I'm sure we're well over the 50%. So maybe, you know, I'm not the expert.
The chancellor can cover that.
The chancellor is next up, as a matter of fact. Chancellor Mather.
Well, thank you. I mean, we have not done exactly that calculation, but I will say that definitely counting the counselors and librarians will help us a great deal, very likely that will even solve the problem. But I think you're hinting on another item. It seems to me that perhaps we ought to take up this matter in our Orange County Legislative Task Force meetings, that 50% law needs to be revisited to include librarians and counselors. But Gary covered several really very important points that we are forth in terms of the faculty salary, 24 faculty members above the obligation and support staff does not count, even some of the technology expenditures that we make do not count under 50% law. Hiring classified staff administrators, opening of ATEP, and we got to open the ATEP, we got to have some minimal staff to get things started, but that doesn't count. And so we are studying this whole issue. We want to make sure that all of our calculations are correct and that we are going to develop a plan and it's going to be a twofold plan. One, that, yeah, we need to seriously consider hiring additional faculty and we will be considering that as a very positive move for the colleges in the district. And secondly, that we also need to keep an eye on reducing the expenditures to the extent we can and the kinds of things that do not help us in this 50% calculation count. Another thing that hurts, I hate to mention this, is, but that giving reassigned time, for example, does not, it hurts us in the 50% calculations because it's not supporting the classroom instruction per se. The list of things that count against us is much longer than the list that is applicable in terms of counting towards 50% law. So we will discuss it, we'll develop a plan, and we'll be working with the board on this thing very actively in the coming months.
Trustee Jay.
Another quick way to solve this would be to assign, but you'd be fighting the dean of counseling and you'd be fighting the dean of library sciences. Assign each counselor or librarian as part of their load, maybe two, three unit classes, which means 40% of their load would be as a teacher instead of as a librarian or counselor. However, as you say, it would cut the counseling, which is a needed service, and it would cut the librarian's share, which is a needed service. But that you could do within the current budget levels without any cost at all.
Administration will be looking at this and you will be hearing much more about this at future meetings. In the meantime, there is a motion on the floor. Before we vote on that motion, I do want to thank our deputy chancellor, Gary Portner. I want to thank the members of his staff, Carol Hilton, Beth Miller, David Katurian, as well as those members of the DRAC committee. And let us vote on item 5.1. And the budget is approved unanimously. Next item is 5.2. 5.2 consists of a number of different board policies which have been here before for review, so they are here for approval tonight. And do I have a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second? Okay, moved and seconded. And there are several trustees that wish to speak to one or more of these items. So we'll start with trustee Pattenberg.
Yes, President Lang, I'm going to request that this item be divided. There are many of these I would not support and so I want them voted on individually.
All right, is there a second on the motion to divide the question?
Second.
Okay, moved and seconded. Let's vote on the motion to divide the question first unless there's any further discussion on that.
Clarification.
Yes.
If I, if I might just clarify that motion, do you want two votes, one all of the ones you like and all of the ones you don't like? Or do you want a separate vote on each of the 26 or so that are here?
32, I counted them.
You want 32 separate votes or do you want to just tell us?
That's correct, 32 separate votes.
I think I'll withdraw my second.
Okay, is there?
I'll second the motion, but I would like to speak.
All right, yes, trustee Jay.
Here's my concern about this. These are the board policies. These are our policies, guys, okay? Now, I don't know who wrote them up and I'm sure their intentions were absolutely admirable, pure as driven snow and all that good stuff, but there's a lot of these policies I'd like to have input to. And I'm going to suggest, and I know we all hate it when we have extra board sessions or workshops, I would like to see a special workshop and session on board policies. And I'm not pointing the finger at anybody. I don't know if Gary made them up, the chancellor made them up, Bob King made them up, who, but these policies have been written, by and large, as far as I know, unless you wrote them, Dave, without board input. And I don't think that's appropriate.
Well, let me tell you what is appropriate, trustee Jay. This is the third meeting that these policies have come, I think the third meeting that they've come to us. They were here for review and discussion at previous meetings. We had invited all trustees to share any comments that they had, both in open session as well as providing written changes that they would like to see. I think the only one that did that was frankly me.
Okay.
And there was no other input from any other trustees that's been provided except for tonight. So I have a problem with that.
Dave, I'm not being critical, but I'm just saying this item should have been highlighted in board consideration. I really think so. And I want to go through these policies one by one as a board, not sitting at home myself and saying, well, I don't like 172, you know, and we should wipe it out. I don't think that's appropriate. I think that the board should discuss it. It's an important item. We're going to be living by these policies. How long did the last one stand? 20 years, 30 years? Maybe 38 years, which is the length of the district.
I understand. If the motion to divide the question succeeds, then you'll have that opportunity this evening. Are there any other comments on the motion to divide the question, not on the specific policy items? All right, trustee Williams.
Dave, as you said very well, this, these policies have been in front of this board at least two or three times for information. I think one time, Bill, I moved acceptance for review and study. We all had a chance to offer our input on all of these board policies at least two to three meetings before this, you all had your chance to speak to them. Most of the time, no one did. There were a few times. So how many times do we need to agendize it to hear from our colleagues? We've been there and done this. If you look at the meeting minutes that are in here that we've approved, you'll see that we've approved for review and study these board policies. Now, that's your chance to offer input into what you're saying.
No question about that, but as I remember, David, and no criticism, and you could look up the tape and so forth, and by and large, when there's an info item, you say, well, since it, and it goes by, lickety-split, we go through three or four of them. Information, guys, any comment on that? Zoom, right onto the next item. This is a big item. And we'll live by these rules for 30 or 40 years.
I intend to support your motion to divide the question. You'll have that opportunity tonight if that passes. So trustee Wagner.
Oh, I'm sorry, go ahead.
So we've had adequate time for comment. The policies, I had issues with one or two policies that I chose to bring up through the chancellor, so I emailed Ragoo. My questions were sufficiently answered, so I did provide my input, but I did it via an email. I didn't want to take time at a board meeting. The questions were answered and so I didn't have any objection to the way the policy was read. But to have 26 separate motions, this.
32.
32. I mean, we've all had a chance to have input on these things. I just, I can't support.
There's changes to them at all. There's not. So they certainly should not involve a lot of the session.
All right, trustee.
Just one other thing, as a solution to this, rather than have 32 separate motions, why don't you have amend my motion, I've already made a motion to approve, to pull the ones that you have an issue with, I assume the bulk of them would be supported for approval. You only may have five or six or so, I don't know, that you really want to vote no on tonight. I don't know.
Trustee Pattenberg.
I think the issue, trustee Lang and my colleagues, is that there needs to be an effort and a way for the board to talk among themselves, not just directly to the chancellor by submitting written material. We have not had any opportunity as a board to hash these things out. Somewhere in here, there's a mention of a subcommittee on, of the board on policies. There's never been a subcommittee on policies, at least under this administration, and there really needs to be far more input. I will, at this point, make a motion to table until we can bring this back in a special meeting.
I'll second that motion, Dave.
All right, that is a non-debatable motion, so let us vote on the.
Trustee, point of order, I inadvertently pushed my vote button and it's showing that I've already voted. Could you clear that first?
Grace, can you clear? Okay, looks like that's been cleared.
Thank you.
All right, so let us vote on the motion to table. And that motion fails on a four to three vote. Trustees Fuentes, Wagner, Lang, and Williams voting against that. Trustees Jay Pattenberg and Milchek are voting for that motion. So we are still left with the motion to separate the question. And are those trustees that wish to speak still speaking about the motion to separate the question?
Yes.
All right. Trustee Jay, is that what you wanted to make a comment about?
Yeah, but I, for instance, now, look, I'm just looking at one hundred, it's a very short one. And I would say I could move to approve that and I could have moved to approve 101 because I happen to agree with it, you know? But maybe we can go through these.
Looks like you'll have that opportunity, perhaps. Trustee Wagner.
I didn't hear an answer to trustee Williams' question. Are we going to at least take in lump sum the policies no one has a problem with and approve them and then just deal with the however many other policies that individuals want to speak to? Are we going to at least follow that procedure or is there a request to vote on each of the 32 separate policies?
The motion is to, at this point, is to separate the question. Trustee Williams.
On the issue of separating them and trustee input, I call to your attention consent calendar, item 4.1, the meeting minutes we just approved. If you look at the 8/15/07 meeting minutes, the board had all of these policies in front of it. We had ample time to debate these policy changes or leave them alone. We had a public meeting. It shows on a motion by Tom Fuentes and seconded by William O. J., the board approved on a six to zero vote. It doesn't show any debate. You had your chance to talk about all of these board policies if you had concerns a month ago and it was a six to zero vote. And Bill, you seconded it, so you had your opportunity to bring up any concerns. This was in front of the board for review and study. So you had a chance there to talk about them. Before the meeting, I had a question about one or two policies. As I say, I emailed the chancellor, I had a question answered, so I didn't even need to bring it up. So we've had a chance to publicly debate any concern we had about these board policies at the last meeting and the board voted unanimously to accept them for review and study. Now they're in front of us for approval.
Can I suggest that we vote on the motion to separate the question because by the time we get through debating this, we'll have been able to get through these items anyways, I suspect. All right. Yes, he did.
Well, the thing that I'd like to say, John, is, yeah, I've had a hell of a summer. I, you know, I can't speak for anybody else on the board. I've had a hell of a summer. Very frankly, when I went home, put my board agenda away, I didn't look at it until this board agenda came out. I have not been well and I'll be the first to admit that. But I can't speak for the other board members. If they've gone through all 32 of them, I suspect they haven't. There's always a lot of trust of the board in its administration, agreed? So somebody's written these out, but we still, at this point, we don't even know who's written them up. I don't care who's written them up. I'd just like to go through them and talk about them with the board as a whole because it affects not only the board, but the district and more than that, the employees and the students in this district are desperately interested in a lot of these policies, whether we like it or not.
Thank you, trustee Jay. Trustee Pattenberg.
As far as these board policies coming to us in the past, that is true, but Bill Jay, our trustee, has made the point that we rush through each agenda. It's already happened tonight. One trustee wanted to get out at 7:00 to watch the Angels game. We never take time to thoroughly explore these. Occasionally, occasionally, these policies are discussed. This is an attempt just to rush through approving all of these policies without board input and frankly, it's shameful.
Trustee Wagner.
There were at least two board meetings where the two of you had the right, I would suggest the responsibility, certainly the opportunity, to do then exactly what you're trying to do now and put a halt to this. And if you had done it then, we wouldn't have these problems now, we wouldn't be looking at the possibility of putting these off for another month or two. And more to the point, the other constituent groups who are involved in the drafting of these policies, who have an opportunity to look at them and comment on them, would have had an opportunity to look at, comment on your proposed inclusions as well as whatever the rest of the board wants to do. As it's proposed now, you're going to come up with some changes, you're going to propose some language, maybe it's going to be acceptable to the rest of the board, it's going to get voted on, and the rest of the constituent groups are never going to have an opportunity to add their own comments. That actually is what is shameful, is trying to cut out the other members of the district community in the drafting of these policies. You've had at least two opportunities to do exactly what you're trying to do now. Our point is, you should have availed yourselves of those opportunities so that we could address those concerns, so that administration could address those concerns, and so that the other constituent groups could address those concerns. You didn't do it. Maybe next time you will. Right now, these are here for approval. You didn't do it. Maybe next time you will. Right now, these are here for approval. It's not a surprise. We've had this agenda for days. It's not a surprise. When we got these as information items a month ago, we knew they'd be coming back to us for approval. There are no surprises here. There's nothing shameful here. There's no attempt to pull the wool over anybody's eyes. This is at least the third time that you people have had an opportunity to look at this policy. It's time to vote on it.
Okay, we are going to vote on the motion to separate.
I still have one more.
I'm sure you probably do, but I'm cutting debate off, and we will vote.
Rayo wrote this through.
All right, let us, all right, the motion on the floor is to separate the question.
And that passes on a four-to-three vote with trustees...
Wait, 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 wait. I believe my vote is wrong.
That's what you wanted, Bill.
Oh, yeah, it is. I want to separate the question.
All right, so...
Thank you, thank you, thank you.
Supported by trustees Jay Padberg, myself, and trustee Milchek, with no votes from trustees Fuentes, Wagner, and Williams, and advisory no vote from our trustee Reiner. So, we will go through these items, and we'll start with Board Policy 100. Trustee Padberg, I still have your name. Did you wish to speak to Board Policy 100?
I would.
All right, very good.
Move approval of Board Policy 100.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right, moved and seconded. Let's vote on this policy.
We see that we want to comment on it.
There, I saw, I did ask for that, and nobody pressed their button. Trustee Padberg, are you voting on this item? Trustee Milchek, are you voting on this item?
I did have my button pushed. I don't know why.
It's not registering.
Well, that's too bad.
Trustee Padberg, you're the one that, right now, I don't have a vote for.
I wanted to speak to the item.
You wanted to speak to the item. All right, unfortunately, all right, very good.
But I'll remember all of this.
I'm sure you will. All right, that policy is approved. Let's vote on, I'm sorry, is there a motion to approve Board Policy 101?
No.
All right, moved and seconded. Are there trustees wishing to speak to this item? Trustee Padberg.
This item is entitled, well, I'm not even sure what it's entitled. It was entitled Authority and Powers of the Board, Governing Board and Mission. Now, it's just revised that we will look at the mission. One sentence. I think that it says nothing, and I see no reason to change the former policy. I'll vote no on it.
Okay, thank you for your comments. Let's vote on this item. And that's approved with a no vote from trustee Padberg. Next is Board Policy 102. Is there a motion for approval?
No.
Second.
And actually, it looks like this is to delete, this is to approve deletion of this item. So, approved and seconded, and trustee Jay wishes to speak to this.
Well, yeah, it says in the third paragraph down here. Under the direction of the board, the chancellor shall be responsible for debating, developing, and updating the board's policy manual. That's what we're discussing. We're deleting it, which is fine with me. I, you know, I don't want him to have that right. I want to be involved.
Then you should be supportive of this. Trustee Padberg.
I don't believe that we have articulated a reason or a need to delete this policy, and I'd like to hear that.
I'll let the chancellor respond to that.
I believe we have covered this particular function under another board policy. I think we need to consider, this is one of the reasons we are bringing all of these policies related to the board at one time, so that if we are deleting something, we are covering it somewhere else. And I'll let Deputy Chancellor Porter comment on it, since he chaired the District Board Policy and Administrative Regulations Advisory Council.
Right. There weren't any policies that included topics that we eliminated. Many of the ones that are deleted or covered sufficiently in other policies that were recommended. Remember, these are policies that are recommended to us through the Community College League of California, and they're the ones that they've given us legal advice or required by law to have. So, many of them, we've adopted their language because the language more completely covers the topic. But there isn't anything that I can think of that was eliminated that isn't somewhere else.
Well, can you point to where this is?
For instance, the board policy is, if you look at 107, that deals with the topic that trustee Jay was just mentioning.
Okay. Trustee Padberg, did you have anything else regarding this?
I want to just clarify. You're saying that 107 replaces and essentially says...
replaces that particular topic that he was just mentioning, and there are other ones that cover other topics.
Okay. Well, it'd be appreciated if those could be identified, perhaps at least in the introduction of this item. Might make it a lot simpler.
All right, let us vote on this item. Okay, approved unanimously. Next is Board Policy 103. Is there a motion for approval?
No.
Okay, moved and seconded. Any questions regarding this item? Let's vote on Policy Trustees Milchekers and Jay. All right, that is approved with two no votes from trustees Jay and Padberg. Next is Board Policy 104. Is there a motion for approval?
No.
Okay, moved and seconded. Any trustees wishing to speak to this item? Trustee Padberg.
This revised policy takes out language requiring that there's an established membership, and I guess there was a typo, because there's a capital T there for "there will be one non-voting advisory member." That's already in there, so I'm not sure what the point was, other than just English grammar on that one. And otherwise, it appears to be very similar, except Jay. Is that correct, Deputy Chancellor?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay. So, can you explain what the need was to take out the first sentence?
I think just conformity with the style of other policies and feeling there wasn't a need, because it's a board policy.
Oh, I see.
The individual policy doesn't need to say it's the policy of the board.
Okay.
With regard to Jay, the rights and privileges of the student member, that was in a less clear manner in the previous policy. So, it's, I think it's more clearly introduced there under Jay.
Okay. And then L, which is simply taking out that the board shall review and adopt rules implementing this policy, that seems to be very important. I don't think that should be deleted. We have occasionally, from year to year, changed the policy on student trustees.
That's staying, isn't it?
No, it's being removed. L is being removed.
Well, first of all, the policy that deals with changing policies is the one that we just did. No, it's 107. So, there's a policy already that exists on changing policies. And within this policy on the student member, it talks about the board's deliberations each year on the rights and responsibilities of the student member. So, in the future, you're going to be dealing with this formally each year, prior to, I think it's prior to May, that it has to be done.
So, it seems needless. I mean, it's more clear to leave it in, I would think, just because that we occasionally in another policy say that we can adjust and then change policies.
It sounded to me like it's eliminating redundancy.
Yes.
Sometimes that's very good.
Yes, it is.
Mr. President.
Yes, trustee Fuentes.
Matthew, I'm wondering if you've had the opportunity to review this one, since it affects the student trustee?
Yes, I have.
And are you comfortable with it?
I'm very comfortable with it. I understand all the policies. I understand what you're saying and redundancy and so forth, and I agree with the adding of Jay, and I don't have any problem with it.
Thank you very much.
Very good. Let's vote on this item.
I'll support this item.
All right, yes. Item is approved with a no vote from trustee Padberg. Next policy is Board Policy 105. Is there a motion for approval?
No.
Moved and seconded. Any trustees wishing to speak to this item?
Is this a new item?
Trustee Jay. Yes, Deputy Chancellor Porter.
This isn't a new item. The only thing that's changing on this is the title of the section that this is going to be under, under the format of the system we're going to. It's not called bylaws. It's called Board of Trustees, all of these policies, and so that's the only change on this one.
Okay, let's vote on this item. Trustee Milchek.
Yes.
Okay, item is approved unanimously. Next is Board Policy 106. Is there a motion for approval?
No.
Moved and seconded, and we've got two trustees wishing to speak to this. Trustee Padberg.
This item deletes almost everything, and in its place puts in the areas that each trustee represents, as well as the term of office, which is clearly spelled out in the election code. These areas that we each represent may well change. We have done that from time to time. So, I'm not clear. There's a deletion of the presiding officer shall be the president, all of that, and how the agenda is prepared in consultation with the chancellor. It seemed very clear what was present, and I'm certainly not going to support this. I think it diminishes and makes it not as clear how the board shall operate.
Did you want to respond to that, Deputy Chancellor Porter?
The areas were spelled out in here, just because, as the committee deliberated, nobody quite knew what they were. So, we figured that the public, who wanted to look through our policies to determine that, would have difficulty. So, it was simply information. It's not required, I don't think. We just tried to give more information. With regard to the quorum and the presiding officer and all, that's in other policies in here.
Okay, very good. Trustee Wagner.
Thank you, Mr. President. There is a small matter that slipped past me the first two times this policy was in front of us, and I wanted to raise the chancellor's attention to this. It says in the first sentence, the term of years commencing on the date of the December board meeting following the election. I'd appreciate if somebody would take a look and see whether that tracks state law. It was my understanding the term starts December 1, regardless of when the first meeting is. And if we could just make sure we're consistent with state law, that'd be appreciated.
How do you want to handle that, trustee Wagner, in terms of if there's a change? Do you want to ask for an amendment to the motion? I don't think you could do that, because you seconded the motion, as I recall.
Sure. I mean, I don't care how the board wants to handle that, or administration, if they need to do a technical change in a month or so. I mean, we obviously have to be compliant with state law, that's all.
Right. No, I can take that one.
Okay. All right, very good. Let's vote on this item, then. Oh, I'm sorry, I missed trustee Jay.
Well, no, I just wondered how we could handle it, too. Should we vote no on it? Or will you handle it? The chancellor handle it when this?
Yes.
I agree, if it's December 1, it should say December 1.
I think the answer will be is that we will make a technical change to this item if required.
Okay.
To be compliant with the law.
To be compliant with law. Let's see. I think I voted on this item. Yes, okay. That item is approved with a no vote from trustee Padberg. Next is Board Policy 107. Is there a motion for approval?
No.
Okay, moved and seconded. Okay, Chancellor Mather.
I just wanted to make one general comment. One recurring question that has been out there is that, why are we deleting something in a given policy which is so important? When I got this whole package of policies from the committee, when deputy chancellor forwarded it to me, and I was reading all of these policies, I was having the same question. Until I read all the policies, then I realized how one was connected with the rest of the policies. That was very helpful in understanding why we were revising or deleting something, because they were being picked up under other policies. Secondly, a point that Deputy Chancellor Porter made earlier that I want to reinforce is that we are doing all of this work in this committee on the policies, consistent with some guidance that we have received from the Community College League of California. They have developed some standards that they're trying to also promote for all the community college districts in California, so that there is some consistency in how policies are stated in one district versus the other. So, I think it would be helpful if the board kept that in mind. Thank you.
Trustee Padberg.
107, I assume the only thing we're doing is changing the title. Is that right?
Yeah, the title of the section that it'll be under. Yes.
All right, trustee Jay, did you want to, did you have, okay, very good. Let us vote on this item, then. Approved unanimously. Next is Board Policy 108. Is there a motion for approval?
No.
Moved and seconded. Trustee Padberg.
Well, again, it doesn't appear that we're changing the title, so are we just merely adding a new policy and referencing the code sections that conform? Is that correct? Okay, thank you.
All right, let's vote on this item. Trustee Jay, approved unanimously. Next is Board Policy 109. Is there a motion for approval?
No.
Moved and seconded. Any questions? Seeing none, let's vote on this item. Trustee Jay, approved unanimously. Next is Board Policy 112. Is there a motion for approval?
No.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, moved and seconded. Any questions on this policy? Hearing, seeing none, let's vote on this item. And that's approved unanimously. Next is Board Policy 120. Is there a motion for approval?
No.
All right, moved and seconded. Trustee Padberg.
I was just a little surprised to see that the location, date, and time of the meeting is to be posted at least 10 days, and maybe we're already doing that. If that's the case, then I know that we don't get our agendas until less than seven days before the meeting. Now, of course, we know that there will be a meeting more than 10 days. Do you have an answer?
Yes. The question is about posting the agenda 10 days. 10 days in advance. What? Posted 10 days in advance. With the outline.
So, I assume it's posted...
Oh, this isn't the agenda. This is just the...
No, this is the posting of the meeting.
Right, this is a notice. I know that. No, it's just the notice.
That's right. It's the posting of the meeting.
Notice of the meeting.
Yeah, and the board adopts that in December.
In December, right.
With occasional changes, but not always.
All right, no problem.
All right, trustee Jay.
Oh, yeah, I know. We get notification in the blue sheet that Ravina so kindly puts out every week, and of course, it lists every board meeting for the rest of the year. Does the public get that, or who gets that blue list besides the board? Do the constituent groups get it?
The blue sheet, Ravina's, just to...
It's on the website. Okay, so that's regarded as public notification, 10 days ahead. I can accept that.
If the constituent groups are happy with it, you know, I don't see a problem.
All right.
It did surprise me when it said 10 days, because I wasn't aware it was that long a period.
All right, let's vote on this item.
Okay.
Trustee Milchek. Item is approved unanimously. Next is Board Policy 122. Is there a motion for approval?
No.
Moved and seconded. Any questions regarding this item?
Now, is this a change?
Trustee Jay. All right.
Is this a change?
This is a new item.
This is a new item, okay. How do we know that? Open the book. Open the book of the...
It doesn't say when it was adopted. All the others will give you the adopted and the other...
Okay, okay, got it, okay. That's a little cue that we can only get from a litigator, so, thank you.
Trustee Padberg?
Well, there may well be, um, matters that are not listed here that are required to come up in closed session, so certainly this would not be prohibited of that. In addition, uh, I, I am questioning whether...
That's why it says "may include."
I understand. I am questioning whether the conferring of honorary degrees should be under, uh, this particular item. We don't confer the degrees. We, um, we can discuss it, but I'm not sure why that is a closed session item.
Uh, Chancellor Mather?
I'll be happy to respond to that. I think, um, in light of, um, uh, a matter that the board dealt with, uh, within the last few months in closed session, uh, where, um, person was on administrative leave, and honorary degree matter and all of that, uh, was discussed in the closed session. So it is in that context, and I think at the top of the policy does say matters discussed in closed session. And, and, and we had discussed, uh, this kind of matter in closed session in that context.
All right, uh, seeing no further questions, let's vote on this item. Item is approved unanimously. Next is, uh, Board Policy 124. Is there a motion for approval?
So moved and seconded.
Okay, moved and seconded. Uh, any questions regarding this item? Not, let's vote. Trustee J. Item is approved unanimously. Next is Board Policy 126. Is there a motion for approval?
So moved and seconded.
Okay, moved and seconded. Any questions regarding this policy? Trustee Padberg?
Yes, um, I have a question about the abstention being taken as, um, an affirmative vote, and I'm assuming that's in Robert's rules, but, um, if you could give me the authority for that, I'd, I'd appreciate it. Obviously, we, I think somewhere in here are following Robert's rules. Do you know that?
Uh, pardon me. Yeah, I believe that, uh, we got an opinion from outside counsel, from Warren Kinsler, regarding that, uh, particular item, and it was following Robert's rules, but I can't cite your chapter and verse. In fact, uh, don't even see the Robert's rules here. This, oh, there it is. Okay.
If that's the case, it should probably be listed. I, I don't think we can list the legal opinion as an authority. Um, we certainly do follow legal opinions, but we could certainly list where the actual reference is.
All right, thank you for, uh, that, uh, comment. Uh, any other questions on this or comments regarding this item? Let's vote on this item. Item is approved unanimously. Um, next is Board Policy 128. Is there a motion for approval?
So moved and seconded.
Okay, moved and seconded. Any questions regarding this item? Not, let's vote on this board policy. Item is approved unanimously. Uh, next is Board Policy 130. Is there a motion for approval?
So moved and seconded.
Moved and seconded. Any questions regarding this item? If not, let's vote on this item. Trustee J?
Well, there's one paragraph in there I don't like, but I didn't see it. It's the members wishing to present that document, such as mayor, district, and president of the meeting. It summarizes the item and provides his or her name. ...affiliation. Uh, but that's, uh, not board members. Yeah, it is a member. No, it's members of the public. Okay.
Okay.
Okay, okay, yep, I support it.
All right, item is approved unanimously. Uh, next is, uh, Board Policy 132. Is there a motion for approval?
So moved and seconded.
Uh, I think trustee Williams, you're only allowed to approve or second, but not both. All right, all right. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
All right, very good. Anybody, anybody wishing to speak to this board policy? If not, let's vote on this item. Item is approved unanimously. Uh, next is Board Policy 134. Is there a motion for approval?
So moved and seconded.
All right, moved and seconded, and trustee Padberg wishes to speak to this.
Um, this references, uh, disruption of meetings, and I'm assuming that the reference to the government code section here is the Brown Act that provides the authority in how the room shall be cleared when the meeting is disrupted. If not, it definitely needs to be here as a reference. Do you know, um, Deputy Chancellor, whether that is the reference?
I, I don't recall.
Okay. Okay, but it is clearly laid out in the Brown Act how to handle those situations, and it should be listed at the bottom.
All right, any other, uh, comments regarding this item? If not, let's, uh, vote on this item. Trustee Milchker, item is approved unanimously. Next is Board Policy 136. Is there a motion for approval?
So moved and seconded.
Uh, is there a second? Did I hear a second?
Second.
Okay, moved and seconded. Uh, let's vote, uh, on this item. I'm sorry, trustee Milchker, did you want to speak to this item, or you just hit the wrong button? Okay. Trustee Padberg? Uh, item is approved unanimously. Next is Board Policy 138. Is there a motion for approval?
So moved and seconded.
Moved and seconded. Trustee Milchker?
No.
Okay, uh, trustee J?
Yeah, my... My question was, why are they held only 30 days?
Uh, Deputy Chancellor Porter, do you know the answer to that question? I'm assuming it's probably because it's contained in one of the references to the...
Right. This is straight out, uh, this policy is straight from legal counsel. You know, we didn't change anything in this.
So I'm, I'm assuming it's either in that government, one of those government code sections, or that education code section?
It's in the Brown Act.
Okay, trustee Williams suggests that's in the Brown Act. Chancellor Mather?
I just wanted to say that all of these board policies have been reviewed by legal counsel.
Very good. Uh, yes, trustee Williams?
It's not exactly in the Brown Act, but it, there's a challenge period to action taken by the board. It's alleged violation of the, in that 30 days. So I think as a matter of record, we keep it for 30 days, which the Brown Act says, period of time of challenge action by the board. It's not alleged, it's not...
Correct. Yeah, unless we're otherwise required to keep it for a longer period than that.
Yeah, we're, we're making the policy on retaining the, the reporting consistent with a challenge to the action we took in that 30 to 40.
Makes sense. Trustee J?
Well, that makes sense to me, too. If, uh, if that's what the act says, that you have to, uh, deal with it within 30 days, I guess there's no reason to keep them beyond 30 days. So, uh...
Uh, trustee Padberg?
Well, it's my understanding that we have archived all of the, uh, tape recorded or videotaped. At least to just simply audiotape-record meetings, and that they're available in the library. I want to know if this changes that, it means we can destroy them in 30 days?
It says at least 30 days.
Is this...
Is that permissive?
We're permitted to keep them longer than that, under this policy.
Well, I, you know, I, I wouldn't support this if this is going to allow us to, within, at the end of 30 days, destroy all of those items. For historical purposes, I think that's wrong.
Okay, very good. Uh, let's, uh, vote on this item. Trustee J, all right, and that item is approved with trustees J and Padberg voting no on this item. Uh, next is Board Policy 146. Is there a motion for approval?
So moved and seconded.
Okay, moved and seconded by trustees, uh, Wagner and Williams, and trustee Padberg wishes to speak to this item.
Uh, I will not support this item. The board has the authority to appoint acting chancellors, not the chancellor. That is the one person that we hire, and even though it, this is for a short period, we have already taken care of that by saying our deputy chancellor will take over when the chancellor is unavailable. So this is, um, completely unacceptable.
All right, very good. Any other, uh, comments on this item? Uh, if not, let's, uh, vote on this item. Trustee Fuentes? All right, that item is approved on a four to three vote, with trustees J, Padberg, and Milchker voting against this item. Uh, next is Board Policy 148. Um...
Moved and approved.
All right, been moved. Is there a second?
Second.
Moved and seconded. Are there any trustees that wish to speak to this item? If not, let's vote on this item. Trustee J, approved unanimously. All right, Board Policy 152. Is there a motion for approval?
So moved and seconded.
Okay, moved and seconded. Seeing no trustees wishing to speak to this item, let's vote on this board policy. Trustee Fuentes, yes, approved unanimously. Uh, next is Board Policy 154, conflict of interests. Is there a motion for approval?
So moved and seconded.
Moved and seconded. Let's vote on this item. Approved unanimously. Next is, uh, Board, uh, Policy 158, political activity. Is there a motion for approval?
So moved and seconded.
Okay, moved and seconded by trustees Wagner and Milchker. Uh, seeing no trustees wishing to speak to this, let's vote on this item. And that is approved with no votes from trustees J and Milchker.
I meant to vote yes, excuse me.
Okay, uh, we will allow for the change in vote by trustee Milchker. If you would change that...
No, no, of course not.
He meant to support that.
Oh, I meant to support that.
Okay, very good. The, so we, that, uh, let the record show that that should be a unanimous approval by all of the board.
It should be allowed.
Thank you. All right, uh, next is Board Policy 160. Is there a motion for approval?
So moved and seconded.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, moved and seconded. Seeing no questions, let's vote on this policy. That's approved unanimously. Next is Board Policy 162, communications among board members. Is there a motion for approval?
So moved and seconded.
Okay, moved and seconded. Seeing no questions, let's vote on this item. And that is approved unanimously. Next is Board Policy 164, board member compensation. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved and seconded.
Okay, moved and seconded. Uh, let's vote on this item. Approved unanimously. Next is, uh, Board Policy 166, health benefits. Is there a motion for approval? Okay, moved. Is there a second?
Second.
Moved and seconded. Trustee Padberg?
It's, uh, my understanding that we have, um, a longstanding legal opinion that essentially, um, provides authority for the, the provision of health benefits to board members who were elected, um, before 1995 and have served 12 years. In addition, we, I think, recently did approve, as a board, the, um, ability of trustees who are former board members and have not, are not currently serving, to continue their health benefits on a self-pay basis. So I'm not sure why we need, this is like redundant to me, but I'm certainly supportive of this. Is this not true? We've already approved this? Do you recall, trust, uh, Deputy Chancellor Porter?
Yes, we've al, the board has already approved that, but not as part of a policy.
Right, correct.
Right.
Yeah, okay.
So that's what this does.
Yes.
All right, let's vote on this item. Trustee Padberg?
Oh, sorry.
Item is approved unanimously. Next is Board Policy 168, on board member travel. Is there a motion for approval?
Yes. So moved and seconded.
All right, moved and seconded. Any questions? Let's vote on this item. That's approved unanimously. Next is Board Policy 172, on board self-evaluation. Is there a motion for approval?
So moved and seconded.
Okay, moved and seconded. Let's vote on this item.
Okay.
And that is approved with a no vote from trustee J. Uh, and that completes, uh, the board policies. So, uh, with that, we will move on to item 5.3, which is the, uh, salary schedule, uh, that has been recommended, uh, to provide COLA to academic administrators in classified management for 2007 through 2010.
So moved and approved.
All right, is there a second to that motion?
Second.
All right, moved and seconded. Trustee Padberg?
Um, this item does not state, um, this effect, but it is an effect of this, uh, being approved tonight. It also provides, uh, COLA to the chancellor. In the contract that was approved, um, against my vote at the last meeting, I believe, we authorized giving the chancellor the same COLA as academic administrators receive. So just so that the public understands, that this item will also provide COLA to the chancellor.
Okay, very good. Uh, let's vote on this item. Trustee J, item is approved unanimously. Next is, uh, item 5.4, academic personnel actions. Uh, is, uh, first I'll ask if there are any changes to this item?
No changes.
Is there a motion for approval?
So moved and seconded.
Second? Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, moved and seconded. Any questions regarding item 5.4? If not, let's vote on item 5.4. And that item is approved unanimously. Next is 5.5, which are the classified personnel actions. Uh, are there any changes to this item?
No changes.
Okay, is there a motion for approval?
So moved and seconded.
Is there a second?
So moved and seconded.
Okay, moved and seconded. Uh, questions or comments on this item? If not, let's vote on 5.5. And that is approved unanimously. All right, uh, we are going to take a brief recess, uh, to set up for our discussion topic tonight, and we will, uh, start that at 8 o'clock. So, uh, welcome to take a 10-minute break. All right, we are reconvened after a brief recess, and we are at item six point one on the agenda, which is an information discussion item regarding ATEP, our development of the Advanced Technology in Education Park, and I'll call on our chancellor, chancellor Mather to introduce this item.
Thank you, President Lang, let me mention that after many years of planning to get ATEP on the map, we are finally here. ATEP has started, ATEP stands for Advanced Technology in Education Park, and we have started a one-acre campus out of sixty-eight acres of land that we have at the old Tustin Marine Base, and and it has started with a good enrollment of four hundred students, with plenty of parking spaces available. And I should thank the ATEP staff for their diligence in working over this project, especially in the last few months. I'd like to recognize Dr. Bob Kopecki, the provost there, Dr. Kathy Peterson, the dean for instruction and student services, Terry Flugman, the director of public relations, and working with the community, Matt Sueres, who is the evening coordinator for the ATEP, among others. But also, I'd like to mention two other individuals. Tracy Daly has been assisting me as a district liaison person at ATEP in monitoring day-to-day developments of lots of details to make sure that the campus got started smoothly. And also, from the district, Brandy Delena, who has just joined the district as the district director of facilities planning, and she really jumped into this project with utmost enthusiasm to make sure that all the construction-related matters were taken care of right away. Also, while we are working on the short-term plan for the city of Tustin, and also, we are in negotiations with a number of partners for the long-term development of ATEP, as I indicated, we really have gotten off to a good start at ATEP with lots and lots of people's help in this. Finally, I want to mention that as Dr. Kopecki and Dr. Peterson are going to give the board a brief overview of the launch, they're also going to talk about the enrollment matters for this fall, as well as the planning that is underway already for the spring semester of '08. With that, I turn it over to Dr. Kopecki and Dr. Peterson.
Thank you, Chancellor Mather. I'm proud to announce that ATEP is launched. We had a successful August twentieth opening day, and we're live and well serving students in the city of Tustin. As the chancellor mentioned, I really would like to, on behalf of the ATEP staff and myself, thank IVC, Saddleback, and the district for all the people who really rallied and came to help us. It was a real exciting opportunity to see how all the campuses came together to make ATEP launch a reality. This is it, this is the Advanced Technology in Education Park as it stands today. Couple of the things I think that we need to look at with regards to the launch of ATEP, as the chancellor mentioned, it's been a while in coming, but actually, it started all back, the formal launch back in April twenty-second of two thousand and four, when the district signed an agreement with the city of Tustin for the conveyance of the sixty-eight acres of property. Of course, this was land that was given to the district free of charge through one of the base closure acts of the former Marine Air Corps Station at Tustin. The mission of the campus was to bring together other groups, organizations, in a partnership and strategic public-private alliance to launch a truly twenty-first century campus. We want to prepare students both for the local economy and for the international economies, and I think we're moving very quickly towards doing that. This is ATEP today, ATEP was designed as a green and sustainable campus with very rigid environmental standards. In many ways, we're on the leading edge of sustainability, and we're very proud to showcase our campus and all of the energy-saving advantages, and also the quality of life that our buildings provide for both faculty and for students. It's a technology-focused campus, each semester we'll be moving more into courses that focus on math, science, the emerging technologies, and Dean Peterson will talk a little bit about that when she comes up to the mic in a few minutes. Here we see a picture of our design model-making class with the leading-edge equipment and eager students learning how to design products and perhaps the cars of the future. We also have an outstanding faculty, we had a faculty orientation where chancellor Mather came to talk to everybody, and it was really a high level of excitement, the room was filled with part-time faculty, and it was really a joy to see everybody excited about moving towards the launch of ATEP. Trustee Jay would like this picture, it's a packed parking lot. We're filling up our classes, and as you can see, the parking lot has quite a number of cars in, which we're very proud of. One thing to remember is that ATEP is part of a much larger plan also, we're part of the Tustin Legacy Plan, which is the development of one thousand six hundred and six acres that the city of Tustin is developing as a really truly unique environment for the twenty-first century, including businesses, malls, hotels, residential housing, parks, we're part of that, and as being part of that project, we are moving along at the same speed that they are, because they intend to develop this property within the next ten years, and we hope to be able to develop our property along with them. Turn it over now to Dean Peterson to talk a little bit about the classes and the students and the courses.
Thank you, I started with the district and ATEP in April, and for the last four months, it's been very exciting, and thank you for the opportunity to be a part of this very exciting project that South Orange County Community College District has embarked on. Let's see, Bob. Our current enrollment summary is in front of you, and we have the design model-making program from the Irvine Valley Campus, and they have developed their program there, and we have designed the lab just for the design model-making program. Phototronics is part of the CACT program, the CACT program, as you know, is state-funded as well as federally funded with grants, and it does laser optics and advanced phototronics, quite an exciting program. Our languages program, health online, humanities, and other programs have brought a variety of students to the campus, mirroring many of the community colleges in California with diverse diversity of ethnicity as well as age and gender, it's very exciting. Thanks, Bob. So for the spring of two thousand and eight, I am in the process now of working with the deans at both Irvine Valley College and Saddleback College, and the vice presidents of instruction, and the vice presidents of student services to develop all kinds of advanced courses, computer courses, we have a high-end computer lab, state-of-the-art with twenty-five computers that can run the new Vista system, and you're probably familiar with that, new program that's on the market now. We can use that for our CAD for the design model-making and prototyping program, and optics and phototronics. The opportunities for new programs are many and varied. From my previous experience at other community colleges, I've developed programs that mirror the businesses in the area and their needs, and their program development, their educational needs, and so I am looking to partner with those businesses, and I invite each one of the trustees to notify me with the information about a person or persons within the businesses that you work who might be interested in advising us in new and exciting programs in your particular professional area, and I can be reached at ATEP, as you know. But I think it's a wonderful opportunity for us to be a part of the community, the business community, provide educational opportunities to people of all ages within the community. Let's see, right now, I would like to tell you that of the four hundred students that we have visiting our campus, two hundred and forty of those students are non-duplicated headcount, and of those two hundred and forty students, ninety are new students. So I'm happy to report that we will open up, I think, new venues for the district and provide educational opportunities provide educational opportunities that weren't there in previous semesters. So, thank you.
I'd also like to share with the viewing audience that we're developing ATEP, looking at the possibility of private-public partnerships. And currently, we're in conversation with Camelot Entertainment Group in our exclusive right to negotiate an agreement period that looks at the master development of the 68 acres. Now, within that, I do want to recognize the tremendous support we have from our partners, especially our academic partners and the partners at the city of Tustin. You see here the partners that are working closely with us to make ATEP a reality, the city of Tustin, California State University Fullerton with a number of projects, Chapman University, their University College, and also an organization called the Young Americans, which spreads the American spirit around the world through song and dance.
We have developed and scheduled some question-and-answer sessions at Irvine Valley College as well as Saddleback College. And of course, those are open to all members of the college community, and we'll be answering questions and just sharing lots of the exciting news about ATEP. Please note those dates, September 11, September 12 at Irvine Valley College, Saddleback College, September 18, and September 19. Thanks, Bob. Last week, KOCTV and the Real Orange reporter, and they came to campus and interviewed some of our students, and we have a news clip. If we have time to show that now, we could present it to the board of trustees with your permission. Would that be okay?
New college opened today in Tustin. Who knew? The campus plans to open some windows on the very latest in technology.
It has a high-tech name, the Advanced Technology and Education Park. Lance Roscoe gives us a look at the new South Orange County Community College campus.
It looks like an average class in an average classroom until you start looking a bit closer. Not every classroom is equipped with instruments like design model-making machines, which are used to develop aircraft and car prototypes. This class on the brand-new $10 million ATEP campus in Tustin is one of the more than 30 offered to those wanting to learn about the latest in science and technology.
We're looking at courses in photonics, laser operations. We have an unbelievable course program here dealing with design model-making, which will train the future automobile designers of the future, along with product designers. We have a real leading-edge computer lab.
These classes couldn't be any more hands-on. For instance, in this class, the students are learning about the latest in technologies, and they'll use this knowledge to actually design an energy-efficient car.
Bob Sherman is teaching a model-making class. He demonstrates some of the hot substances being used in the design field, like a carbon fabric, which not only withstands the heat of a blowtorch, it actually gets stronger. This combination classroom and lab is filled with samples, equipments, and devices which allow students to learn about the newest technology by trying it.
The extraordinary thing about this technology is we have those 3D machines. Years ago, if you wanted to develop a product, you'd make a solid model, and your client said, "Well, okay, let's make a prototype so it works." Well, there's another month or two to make a prototype. Today, on these machines, we start it tonight, come in tomorrow, and it works.
Carlos Bellans Weyla is one of the 400 students enrolled at the new college. He's hoping to develop the skills to become an auto designer.
Learn all kinds of cutting-edge technologies, stuff that'll help me auto-design a car or something in the future.
The one-acre, $10 million campus is located on the edge of the old Tustin Marine Base, but was built as a brand-new facility. ATEP officials say there's plenty of room for expansion, because they have more than 60 acres of adjacent land. And they say even though its class offerings are cutting-edge, it's affordable for everyone, because it's technically a community college, tuition is only $20 a unit. In Tustin, Lance Roscoe, Real Orange.
Very good. All right. First of all, we'd like to congratulate both Provost Kopecki and Dean Peterson on a very successful launch for the new campus. And obviously, we're all, just as you are, very excited about our plans for ATEP. Very good. Next item on the agenda. Ah, yes. Trustee Wagner.
Well, thank you. I want to echo the congratulations, and I hadn't seen a Real Orange piece. That's a very, very nice piece, and I saw some nice write-ups in the local press. So, we are off to a great start, and my thanks to everybody who was responsible for that. I had a couple of questions or some issues to raise, specifically with respect to the class offerings that we have at ATEP. I see, first of all, 400 students, which is a good start. Obviously, we intend to grow that, but we just looked at the enrollment figures. Chancellor sent them to us today, and it just, it seemed to me they were a little bit out of, there was something that was a little bit out of whack. IBC programs had 266 students. CACT, which used to be housed at IBC, had 85, which is over 300, that's 340 or 50 or so of the 400. And I'm a little, frankly, a little disappointed to see the Saddleback offerings that had a couple of high-tech classes, SIM classes, that ended up getting canceled, and then just some, you know, essentially some foreign language classes that were being offered. So I'm curious, especially what's being done by both colleges, but especially Saddleback, to support ATEP, to develop new programs, to put together vocational ed classes, to get some representation on the ATEP campus, and to sort of develop the high-tech programs that are going to be the backbone of that campus. You know, I'd be curious where the colleges intend to go from here with respect to helping us with offerings and making ATEP work.
President McCullough, did you wish to address that?
Yes, the initial Saddleback College schedule had over 19 sections. That was whittled down by agreement with the ATEP personnel. So our schedule was cut from 19 sections to about six sections, but the original plan was to offer 19 sections.
In what? Sections in what?
Oh, variety of different gen-ed classes, language classes, computer classes.
And that got, why was that whittled down, Provost Kopecki?
When we originally put the program together, we shared the courses with IBC, and there was a little bit of concern that we were replicating courses that IBC could be providing. However, this year, what we've done is we've kind of reoriented ourselves to move more towards doing math, science, and absolute technology courses with support for language courses, which are important in technology transfer, and also looking at more of the math and science ones that would serve the Tustin area.
Well, was the whittling down of Saddleback classes, was that a whittling down of math, science classes, or were those even offered to you? I mean, I'm not sure that answers my question. Why did we whittle down classes from Saddleback?
Because IBC felt that they might be in competition with what they were offering. But we've worked through that for this semester.
All right. So, when will we see a proposed course offering for next semester?
We're in the process of finalizing that, and I also shared with the presidents today some additional requests that we have from ATEP for additional technology-oriented courses.
And can you give us an idea of how many sections from IBC and sections from Saddleback that you expect will be offered in spring?
I might defer to Dean Peterson on that. She was doing the final report today. If she could come up to the mic, please.
Could you just repeat your question? Do you want specific names of courses or the numbers?
If, we'll start with numbers.
Oh, okay. So, the CACT program will continue to offer about six to seven courses in addition to workshops that are like not-for-credit kinds of courses. And then, from Irvine Valley, as I mentioned in my presentation, the deans and the vice president of instructions have been very forthcoming with the courses that they'd like to offer. And so we have a whole cadre of design model-making programs again from Irvine Valley College. And then, in addition, there are three math, advanced math courses, accounting, which is part of a cohort group of business people coming from the area that will be taking an accounting course, and then ESL, Spanish, Chinese, Japanese, and French. Saddleback has been very responsive as well to offer us some business courses. I've developed, not I've developed, they have developed, but there are three to four business courses for small business owners, as well as business management courses. And then, the CIM courses will be offered again. And what we have done this time around is put those in a time slot in the evenings, which is more conducive to the working adult, who this course, these courses would appeal to them, because they want to retool and get their certification and advance their career in this, in the computer information programs. Should I continue? There are addition, there is some...
More?
Uh-huh. Yes, yeah, I've got a whole, yeah, I have got political science courses, astronomy, other science courses, and some other math courses that are going to be offered. And I'm hoping that we can offer Intro to Geographic Information Systems, which is part of the GIS, and I'm sure you all are familiar with that, the geographic, where the satellite's image, oh, sorry, I heard a radio, the satellite's image, and it helps to develop maps, and police departments use this as well. And so GIS is an up-and-coming technological program. So both campuses are very engaged in this process and have been very supportive. I've attended meetings, deans' meetings. And so I think, as Provost Kopecki said, we have put the past aside and are moving forward with the spring of '08 and hope to offer about 50 different sections.
All right. Well, I look forward to seeing the list. Thank you.
Okay.
Trustee Padver.
Well, just to comment again on the competition between the two campuses, Saddleback and Irvine, I'm not sure what that's all about. I just wonder if you could address that a little bit. It stands to reason to me that we would have more offerings from IBC, because they're probably within a 10-mile geographic location of the ATEP campus, five mile. And of course, Saddleback, I'm sure, is probably closer to 20. So that seems to make sense to me, that Irvine would be more involved, but I'm just a little more curious about what the competition was all about.
Well, I'll attempt this. It's been quite a while, and there was a committee working on all of the courses and with the VPIs, with the vice presidents of instruction, putting these courses forward. And the faculty that met on this determined that some of the courses were duplicative and would draw from IBC if they were offered there. And again, I don't recall the details of that, but for example, two, I think there were two writing courses, for example, and that kind of thing. So the idea was to offer a spread of courses that wouldn't be competitive between the two campuses.
Trustee Wagner.
Let me ask about these SIM classes. When we offer them at Saddleback, do those routinely get canceled? I mean, is this a geographic issue?
It's probably a timing issue, because we have the original schedule call for the SIM classes to be offered during the day and in the evening as well. And the final schedule was only during the daytime, and we later on switched it to the evening time, and that might have confused the issue a little bit. They are generally high-tech, low-enrollment classes, and we've had exceptions to allowing them to go with relatively low numbers. So it's a fairly high-tech computer program, and we're going to try it again to see if we can generate a greater audience.
Trustee Fuentes.
President, I'd like to offer a comment, if I may. We're now moving forward, and I'm so pleased and commend Bob and the chancellor and the entire team. I'd like to offer, just for the record, a bit of philosophical and historical reflection as this item comes back to the board today, to talk about having students actually on the ATEP campus. I hope that as we move forward in this wonderful project, that we'll never forget that we have this project because of the peace dividend, and that's unique to our district in a special Why? Because of the personality of the great leader that afforded America the peace dividend. And why is that special to our district? Because I don't think we should ever forget that it was Ronald Reagan who turned the first spade of earth for this campus where we meet today at Saddleback. And here, decades later, we celebrate a new and mighty potential of a new campus in the district at ATEP, part of his peace dividend. That says there's a special consistency in the development of our district. I'm very proud of that, and I think that our local citizens are proud of that, and I wanted to state it for the record. Thank you.
Thank you, Trustee Fuentes. And seeing no other trustees wishing to speak, thank you again, both for your support and to all of the people that were so instrumental in launching the ATEP campus. With that, we will move on to item 7.1, which are the Saddleback College and Irvine Valley College accreditation-focused midterm reports that is here for information, and the chancellor will introduce this item.
Thank you, President Lang. As you mentioned, both the colleges have been working on, and now they have produced a draft of their midterm accreditation report, which is due to the commission by October 15. And it will be back to the board in the final form next month before it is sent out to the commission. In the spirit of accreditation standards and accretion commission's emphasis on openness and dialogue and communication, the district has been working with the board leadership and with the whole board, for that matter, to put together a response to those particular recommendations that relate to the district and the board. And so, in the attachments here, you'll find our response, and I would hope that on behalf of the district and the board and the colleges would integrate this response in their respective reports under the appropriate recommendations, as indicated in our response. And I'm hopeful that both the colleges will integrate the response in the appropriate places after the colleges' response, and that's how the final report will come to the board in September. And it's also hoped that the final report, once it is presented to the board, should not have any further changes, because that's what the board would have seen, and then that's how it needs to be submitted to the accretion commission by the timeline that I mentioned of October 15.
Thank you, Chancellor Mather. Trustee Wagner.
Thank you, Mr. President. Actually, I guess I was going to make a lot of the points that the chancellor just made. It's my hope that when we get this back next month, that it will be in its final form. And maybe in light of our discussion on policies earlier today, it's probably important that we emphasize the fact that now would be the time for board members to raise questions and suggest some changes, because the next time this comes back to us, that will, you know, not only not be appropriate, but this is not something that goes out under board that the board is supposed to approve. So there will not be an opportunity later for us to make input. So I would certainly hope that anybody on this board who has changes would avail themselves of the opportunity to make those changes or make those suggestions. of the opportunity to make those changes or make those suggestions tonight, since this will be effectively your last opportunity to do so, to discuss it, at least to discuss it in front of the whole board. And then again, I want to just echo the chancellor's request. Hopefully, we will see this in its final form because in the spirit that the Accreditation Commission undertakes its work of full and open debate and communication, it would not be appropriate that something gets sent in that is, that has not been fully vetted by the college community, which is why I thank the chancellor for the opportunity to vet these reports now so well in advance of their due date.
Okay, thank you. Trustee Williams.
Well, I too support the chancellor's recommendation. And I was just thinking, time flies when you're having fun. I think we're up in 2010 again, to be in this thing all over. That's not that far away. So let's, let's move this along. I, I think it's only fair that the trustee's responses be included. And I look forward to bringing this to a conclusion, but it's not that far away until we start the whole thing over again. So I hope to be here.
Trustee Padver.
Well, in response to Trustee Wagner's comments, I would hope that the board could certainly get their comments to the chancellor after tonight. We only saw this report on Wednesday, along with everything else in this agenda. So that's hardly enough time for us to digest this. So hopefully, you will, if you want to make comments, do that after tonight, but timely, I would think, maybe hopefully before the end of this month, or certainly early September.
Trustee Wagner.
Actually, I think that at least the board portion of the report has been out to us for several weeks now. So it may be the first opportunity to see what the rest of the college community has to say. But those particular paragraphs and pages have been out to us for a couple of weeks. And my suggestion certainly was not that later opportunities be sent to the chancellor, we have opportunities to send to the chancellor our comments. My only point was, next month, it'll be too late to call, halt the whole process and start wordsmithing the particular document, kind of like we tried to do today with the, with the policies. Because at that point, it'll be well, well beyond the time that the report has to be in a somewhat final form, that the constituent groups have to buy off on it, sign off on it, make final recommendations and changes to their portions of it. I just don't want to repeat next month of the unfortunate show we had tonight.
Trustee Padver. Trustee Padver.
Well, of course, we certainly need to be timely about this. But I believe that we should not only look at the portion of these reports that, reports that deal with the board, but look at it in its entirety.
Yes, I don't think there's any disagreement with that, Trustee Padver. I do want, though, to particularly draw attention to those members of the board of attachments three and four, which include a number of different exhibits as well, that do indicate at least a more formal response by the Board of Trustees and the chancellor to some of the recommendations that have been made by the visiting teams. And I, and again, I also want to echo the chancellor's expectation that the trustee and chancellor responses would be integrated with the college reports so that there is a fair representation from all constituent groups regarding progress or lack of progress or issues regarding recommendations that have been made by the teams and the different perceptions that there are regarding, you know, what's happened with respect to those Trustee Padver.
Yeah, I don't think that any of the comments are contradictory to the other, and certainly are, I'm supportive of it. I did want to request that the board president recognize our shared governance, who've been trying to get your attention and would like to address this item.
I'm, yes, certainly willing, certainly would like to do that. I'm not sure who that is exactly.
I think it's all of us.
Ah, okay, very good.
Randy Anderson, I've met you all. I'd just like to say a couple of words in behalf of the Academic Senate Saddleback. I had the pleasure to be part of this report, putting it together. And we actually started this back in spring, and I wanted to give you a little flavor of what we've gone through. The accreditation report, this process of having a faculty members come forward, who I happen to be the one who stepped forward to work on this, with Mary Williams, my co-partner over here with the report. We started meeting way back in spring. And our whole attitude on this report has been, we want to pull people together, and we want to present what the commission is asking us to do. This is a focused accreditation report. They're essentially asking us, what are you doing to continue the process? And we wanted to show them that. And I do think that's what we have been doing. And so we started with the faculty way back in the spring requesting faculty to come forward. And we did say, we said, we need documentation. We don't want to hear just what you're saying. We want to see where it is. We want, we want information, we want documentation from the meetings on what's going on and what we're doing to further the progress with the issues that we've had here at Saddleback. I just wanted to make a couple of comments on some of the information that I've noticed going with the report. There are some issues in here that seem to me that they're sort of directed at the last report. And we've been trying to really focus on what we need to do to move forward on this. So I would hope that as you're looking at this, even though some of the comments you see are somewhat pointed in terms of who's doing what, a lot of this, to me, looks like it's pointing to the last report instead of this one where we're moving forward. There's also some issues in here about, the one comment we hear, and I know that sometimes we have differences of opinion on whether the district supports the colleges or the colleges support the district. But the one thing that I noticed in hearing some of the comments was that we just redid a survey that we did way back on the previous one and made some comparisons. It really is the impression of the faculty, right or wrong, and the people that responded to this, we had 237 responses this time, that the district supports the college, not the colleges supporting the district. So that is their perception. And this is what the accrediting commission is asking us to do, whether it's right or wrong. They're saying, what is their perception? And so that's what we presented in the report. There's also some suggestion in there that one or two faculty members appointed by the senate are offering this report. Well, I need you to understand the process. Yes, there are one or two faculty members that have stepped forward, but what we've asked for is input, and we've taken input. So very little of what you see in here is what one or two people have actually said. It's what we have pulled together, right or wrong. And that doesn't mean that we still don't have time to put more information in this report, because we do, and that's why we're bringing it to you. Overall, I want to say that I think we've had a very positive focus. We still have problems to deal with, and we understand that. But I think all of us, and I think, and I won't speak for the president of our college, but he's been very supportive with this report, and we all are trying to work together to make this a very positive move forward in saying, what is, and these are the things that we still need to work on. And I don't know if Mary wants to add to this, or you do.
Thank you. I'll recognize-
Mary, do you want? Do you want to get Saddleback out of the way first?
Oh, sure. Mary Williams.
Okay, I just want to say, I do have some concerns. And my concerns are really based on the fact that when I took on this task, my goal as a participant in the process was to try to provide a fair and unbiased report that would address the findings of the last three visits. But we've talked at great length about what an expensive, time-consuming process this is, and how it pulls the resources, not only of our time, but the financial resources of the colleges away from what we're here to do, which is to provide services to our students. So we really approached it from the perspective of writing a report that wouldn't bring us another visit in a year. As you said, we're going to have to start in 18 months preparing the next one. And so we've really tried not to air our dirty linens in public, but figured we'd address our problems collegially. I've just seen the district response for the first time tonight, and as I read through it, my concerns are that we're going to end up creating a debate in print. And I don't think that's in the best interest of the college. I had a couple of examples. One is, it refers to the fact that faculty and staff continue to approach the board members individually. If the staff is involved in that, I don't know who, because I take more heat for the fact that I don't call you and complain about things than the other way around. The other, one issue that I did want to address, and, and the reason I'm doing this now is that I don't know that we're going to be given a chance to respond to your report the way you're being given a chance to respond to ours. It talks about how the Johnson and Associates study looked at workload. Johnson and Associates does not look at workload. It looks at classification. It looks at salaries in relationship to the community. It doesn't address workload. And an issue that the staff has had repeatedly over the years is that workload pressure. Some people experience it, some people don't. We wanted quantifiable data about workload. If it's not addressed, fine, but I would hate to leave the incorrect impression with the visiting team that through the Johnson study, we visited workload. So I don't know how we address these, the differences where we see inaccuracies in your report, other than a debate. And I don't think that's in our best interest.
Okay, thank you. Yes, Wendy Gabriella.
Thank you. I too share my colleagues' concerns that have been voiced tonight. And I assume that everybody on the board has read the report that will be, that you're asking to integrate into the colleges' report. And I'm assuming that all seven trustees support what is written in your section of the report. If so, it's quite disappointing. And I think that Mary Williams is correct when she said that Saddleback, they tried very hard not to point fingers and air dirty laundry in the accreditation report. We did too at IVC. Our process was very inclusive, very widespread, and everything is documented to the T. And I'm sure Trustee Wagner recognizes the amount of documentation in the report. I don't think the same can be said of the section that you're asking us to integrate into our report. I think it's going, could perhaps maybe create further issues with the accrediting commission. And I hope that you would reconsider some of the language that's in here. I also hope that when, if the board wants to integrate something into the college report, that every statement that you're asking us to integrate be documented, just like we have to document every statement that we put in. And so what we're being asked to do now by the board president and by the chancellor is integrate information into our report that isn't documented. That's a problem. It's a very big problem. So I don't know how we're going to proceed on this, but if I were to send this report that you submitted tonight out to the college community at Irvine Valley College, it's not going to be very well received because of the lack of documentation. And frankly, quite frankly, there's a lot of finger pointing in here that's quite petty. And if I could, I would like to read a section. For example, it says here, where did it go? Of course. The report, now this is referring to the progress report from 2006. It says, "The report also neglects to mention the negative, disrespectful, and unprofessional faculty behavior off camera. At the March 2006 board meeting, faculty leadership left during the chancellor's comments. And during many meetings, faculty leadership openly talk out loud to each other when trustees and the chancellor are speaking on board agenda items. This has never been brought to our attention." Is the accreditation report, which is a public document, now the time to bring this to our attention? And if I can go on further. "In addition, faculty leaders routinely talk out loud to each other during chancellor's docket and cabinet meetings." Since the board isn't in chancellor's docket or cabinet meetings, do you actually know this to be the case? And actually, the chancellor has never brought this up with faculty leadership. Again, is the accreditation report, the report to air this type of issue in public? And is the board going to sign off on this when they don't actually know this to be the case? Further, it states, "Some faculty leaders have filed complaints with the state chancellor's office. Could that please be documented? I believe the last complaint that was filed with the state chancellor's office was filed by both academic senators in the year 2004, and it was over Board Policy 2100.1. And if you remember, the state chancellor's office found that the senate's complaint actually had validity, and we had to change Board Policy 2100.1 based on that complaint. Since that time, the senates have not filed a single complaint with the state chancellor's office." So now we're talking three years since a complaint has been filed with the state chancellor's office. And if I can go on, it states here that some faculty leaders have filed complaints with the state chancellor's office and have gone to the media. There's no documentation there. When was the last time a faculty member, faculty leadership is what it indicates here, when was the last time faculty leadership went to the media? See, that's the type of information that needs to be documented in these reports. And I think you're going to find, if you Google faculty leadership and you look, for example, Google Wendy Gabriella or Wendy Phillips, Carmen Dominguez, Randy Anderson, Carmen, Claire Desario Silva, you're not going to find a single time that we've gone to the media since 2004 or 2003. So I'd just like to say, this is a real problematic document on behalf of the colleges. And I hope that you will all read it very, very carefully and submit your comments. Gwen Plano is the accreditation co-chair, the vice president at Student Services at Irvine Valley College. We've both been receiving comments from the college community with regards to our report. Perhaps, I don't know how to coordinate this, but I frankly, if this has to be integrated into our report, I don't know if I can sign our report. I mean, it's real problematic. It's not documented. Many cases, it's just flat wrong. And I think if you read our report really carefully, IVC's report, during the board forum, I took copious notes, and I tried very hard to work in every statement that you all made during the forum. So for example, you say that the faculty invite micromanagement. I included that in our report. That's in there. Where you say that the accrediting commission doesn't meet in open and meets in secret, I included that already in our report on your behalf. Almost every single exhibit that is submitted with your report, Exhibit A is Board Policy 2100.2, that's already included in our report as a reference. You include Board Policy 4056, the Classified Employees Participation and Decision-Making, already included in our report. You include the resolution from 2006, already included in our report. You include the Strategies for Enhancement Effective Board Agendas and Meetings, already included in our report. You include Board Policy 6140, College Speakers, already included in our report. You include the Study Abroad Program Regarding District Liability, already included in our report. The only item that you include in your section that we do not already include in the report is the Summary of Academic Senate's Roles and Responsibilities, which we discussed at the board forum two years ago, and actually did not become a member, did not become a product which was incorporated into any board policy. It is nothing. It doesn't even exist. It was advanced by the senates, it was dismissed by the board at that meeting, and it's not seen in the light a day for two years. We can certainly include it. It doesn't frankly mean anything, but we can include it. So you've got one document here that has not already been included in our reports. So I hope- So, um, I hope that the Board President can work with the college presidents. I hope that we're not forced to integrate into our college reports information that is not documented. That's not, not appropriate for these reports.
Let me try and respond to that. I don't think we're asking to have you, um, take verbatim, um, everything that we've indicated in these items here. Uh, I think what the board is interest, well, I think what the board is interested in, um, is that we have, uh, be able to have a direct say rather than just have comments attributed to us that may not fairly represent our point of view about, uh, where we are in terms of the, um, uh, recommendations that have been made by the Accrediting Team. Uh, and I think, um, what we're asking for is a chance to integrate, uh, those comments that we have, uh, that we can all come to some agreement on, that can be properly documented, that do fairly represent progress that the, um, the board and the Chancellor feel have been made in addressing some of these accreditations that we don't feel have necessarily been given, uh, adequate, um, uh, you know, uh, uh, treatment by the, uh, by others that have been involved with the writing of the report. And, uh, I think your suggestion is probably a good one, that we use the time that's still available between now and when this report has to be submitted, uh, to see if we can work on, uh, coming up with a, um, response, uh, that the board feels very comfortable with, uh, that does have the proper degree of, uh, support that's necessary, uh, so that we do feel like we've had a fair, uh, ability to respond, uh, and, and provide the board perspective for this.
And if I could say one thing, I do not think that we would not include any documentation that you intend would want to present. So if there is documentation that says something differently, yes, absolutely, that would go in the report.
Okay. I think that's what, uh, that's what we're interested in. Trustee Wagner.
Well, there's a lot to say here. First of all, um, I'll deal with, uh, the comments from the, uh, academic senators and classified senate in a moment, but I want to make it clear, and I thought this was what we were working towards, Mr. President, and maybe the Chancellor can correct me if I'm wrong, but that the proposed language from the board and administration and the response, uh, that we draft, uh, gets included verbatim. Uh, that's why it's been shared with the board and why all the board members have had opportunities before and have opportunities now to address, uh, the particular concerns and the language. Uh, and if I'm wrong on that, let me know, Chancellor, but it's my understanding that it was to be included verbatim, correct?
Correct. That is my understanding. I think it is our response, um, on behalf of the, uh, district and, and the board. And just like we do not tell the colleges as to exactly how they was to state their perspective in, in terms of responding to the various recommendations, uh, that's why I indicated that in the spirit of open communication, dialogue, and so forth, um, the college is entitled to say as they see fit, and so should the, uh, district and the board be able to see it as they fit. When the visiting teams have come, they have written things about the college and the district and the board as they saw it fit. So I think, um, uh, if the colleges start going in the direction of, uh, censoring what the district and the board have to say, I don't think that's a good direction to go in.
Yeah, if, if I could.
Well, we, we are still, I think, in the comment period.
Right, right, right.
In terms of developing our responses, that was my real point.
My only point was I still had the floor, I thought.
Go ahead.
That's all. So, I mean, I want to thank the Chancellor for that clarification, and that was, uh, my understanding as well. And yes, we're still in the comment pay, uh, phase, and, and that's why we have the comment phases, so that changes can be made. But once final language is approved, it's my understanding that language goes in without censoring, uh, by any, of, of any constituency by some other constituency. And if that language from the board has to go in under a separate section that says "Board Response," uh, that's fine. I don't have a problem with that. I'm not asking that all this get folded into one, uh, you know, mish, mishmash of language. Uh, it can be stated very clearly in there where there are difference of perceptions and what are, are certain perceptions. Um, but, but with respect to the specific comments that were made that, that just came to us, I mean, you know, the, the argument about dot, not documenting, um, strikes me as very hollow. Um, I'll give you, I'll give you some examples. Um, in the Saddleback Report, for example, uh, I'm on page 22, and then it goes to the pa, top of page 23, there's a comment in there about board meddling in seemingly insignificant routine business, and they go on to give examples. And the examples are, and, and these are, they give three examples, two of them actually happened. Um, the, the third one was a decision made by the colleges, not the board. Um, so there's certainly no documentation of that third thing, but the response that we put together is explaining why it isn't meddling, why it is the board's business. There may be disagreements amongst other constituent groups as to whether or not that is an accurate perception, but that is the perception of the board. And it's not a case of looking backwards when we ought to all be looking forward. It's a matter of correcting the record. Um, when, to, I'll, I'll use a homely example. If the report accused board members of beating their wives, and the board members wanted to say, "No, we don't beat our wives." It isn't a fair objection to say, "Oh, you're looking backwards. It's time to move on," and explain what's going to be done in the future to stop beating our wives. Um, and so, when we're looking back, what we are doing is attempting to provide a perspective that you may disagree with, but that has been, uh, omitted completely from this dialogue, and it's time that that perspective no longer be omitted. Put in what we end up saying, put it under Board Report, you know, sign or not. But I'll, I'll have you know, I mean, you know this, I'll, I'll mention to the public. The Board President has to sign off as well on this document. And without making the changes, without at least putting the board perspective in there, I think the Board President is going to have, or certainly I would recommend that he have, as much of a problem signing a document that is as one-sided as what was presented to us, um, without making the, um, at least the arguments that need to be made the other way. Are, are these positions documented? Well, you just got done going through the list of exhibits that we were offering. We've offered exhibits to support our position. Indeed, most of those exhibits thankfully are already going into the report, and that's good. Um, but clearly it's documented because we've got a whole laundry list of exhibits that we all agree on. Uh, the rest of it is argument, but truly, you haven't documented everything. You've made some arguments too about meddling and, and using those kinds of charged words. Well, you know, you're, now, hang on. Now, Ms. Gabriella, you're pointing to, to Mr. Anderson like it's all his fault, and, and I'm, that was just the example I found. My, my, my recollection is, and I will look when I'm, I will look as soon as I am, I am done here, but that was the first one that came to me. Um, there is, there, there's always going to be a difference in perspective. We're asking that our perspective finally be given to the Accreditation Commission as well, and in the words that the board is putting forward. And I think that is a fair request. You aren't asked to sign off on what we say. You aren't asked to agree with us. In fact, we're doing this a month early so you have an opportunity to respond, all right? But if all of your stuff's going in, our stuff gets to go in too, because that's only fair, and we'll let the commission sort it out.
Just in response, I'd just say that, um, we are following the guidelines. One of the things I have noticed, I think you may want to consider, is the guidelines from the Accrediting Commission and what we are to put in and shouldn't be putting in. I mean, there are guidelines, and you, I don't think you have those. That might be something that you want to look at to see where our frame of reference is. And I do agree that if there are things that need to go in this report, and I don't want to speak, uh, for Mary, but, um, I think we have tried to give what we have had. We have asked for documentation, so we certainly would look at anything that you provided for us to give a differing point of view. I don't think that's the issue. I think the issue with the way that we worded this report needs to be in a way that we're working together and not against each other, and I think that's what we were trying to say. Not that we were intentionally leaving something out or adding something that maybe could have been said differently. I think we need to all look at this report so that we know we are working together. That was the issue.
May I?
Uh, yes, go ahead.
Since you were responding to me, I think, I think that's an absolutely appropriate and in my view wholly admirable, admirable way to approach this. So I'll sign off on that completely. What that means to me is that you look at our response and you say, "Oh, here, here is a countervailing position from the trustees, so therefore my objections over here." When I'm whining, complaining about something over here, and I apologize for that.
I heard that.
As I'm complaining about something over here, and the trustees are whining about something over here, that maybe this is an area where we'll come to an agreement, um, offline, not in a report that's going to the Accreditation Commission.
Right.
All right? So take a look at what we have to say and see where you might feel it's appropriate to tone down your report, and maybe at the end of the day, uh, no response from us will be needed. I would doubt it, but, but you will absolutely have my support as we try to move in that direction.
Together for a while, so I would agree with you on that.
Very good. Uh, Chancellor Rather wish to speak?
Yes, I would just like to mention that in terms of the accreditation guidelines and things, I'm well familiar with those. I've attended the workshops. I've done, I've been on various visiting teams to, to other colleges. And, um, in fact, I also had a conversation with Dr. Barbara Beano, the Executive Director of the Accrediting Commission, um, about all this, um, at one point, and she indicated that, uh, if the district and the board trustees have different perspectives, not a problem. That perspective ought to be clearly, uh, included. So we have worked consistent, uh, with the advice and guidance that we have received. And there are a number of things, um, in this report, uh, of both the colleges as well as previous reports, uh, that have, that have had some statements which were, um, not appropriate. Uh, we did not ask you to delete those or take those out. Um, there have been some things, even in the visiting teams' reports, that were not sub, that were not substantiated. Uh, no evidence was sought by them. It has been extremely troubling, uh, to be honest with you, and, uh, we have tried to provide some response in the past, and as I have noted on a previous occasion, at a previous board meeting, that district and trustees' responses were given substandard treatment. Uh, they were put away in the appendix and, um, on the attachments with very little, uh, narrative in the, in the body of the report. So, um, that's why I thought that the Accrediting Commission has been emphasizing, and I think you'll agree, that all the various perspectives be included. For example, in the IVC report, it clearly says, "Here is the academic senate perspective. Here's the classified senate perspective. Here is, uh, or classified staff perspective. Here's the administrative, college administration perspective." So what's wrong with including the, uh, district and the board trustees' perspective? I think any changes that need to be made in the district and board trustees' perspective is by the district and the board trustees. Um, and I don't see any problem with that wherever it says, let's say, our response relates to accreditation number, I mean, the, yeah, accreditation recommendation number eight, and if you have provided your response after the college's response, just include our response, whereas, and, and you can label it as district slash board trustees' response or perspective. Uh, even in Saddleback College's, uh, report, college response is there for a given recommendation, and then at the end of that, include the district board trustees' response, clearly labeled. You don't have to subscribe to it. The college doesn't have to be, to subscribe to it, but at least you can honor and respect that this is the perspective of the district and the board, and leave it as that. Uh, we, we, this way, we respect what the college has to say, and the college can respect what we have to say. It shows we are working together, and we can send in the report to, to the commission, and as, uh, Trustee Wagner pointed out, let the commission sort it out. So, uh, you know, I'll, I'll give you one example that I found extremely disturbing to me, uh, that, uh, this is a new one for me, shocked the heck out of me. It says in the IVC report that, uh, "When Chancellor gives goals to the college president," and that's my right as an, as a chancellor to, as part of the evaluation process, to give goals to the college president, then I'm micromanaging. To me, that's laughable.
Uh, Trustee Fuentes.
Mr. President, um, I noticed that the items that follow are information items, which of course can be presented to us in written format, and, um, the time for adjournment is 9:00 PM. We have exceeded that, so I would, um, uh, move the order of the day at this time.
Yes, thank you. In fact, I think I'm looking for a motion at this point to extend the meeting at least until 9:30, I think is what we, uh, all right? Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Uh, it's been moved in.
Excuse me, Mr. President.
Ah.
I appreciate your, um, good try.
(laughing).
I, I have called, I have, I've moved the order of the day, which requires an up and down vote to adjourn the meeting.
Okay, very good. We will, uh, we will vote on your motion. I think it was duly seconded by Trustee Wagner, is that correct?
Absolutely.
All right, very good. We are voting, we are voting on adjournment of the meeting.
Excuse me, Mr. President. Point, point of order, uh, I would like to turn to our, um, unpaid parliamentarian. It may well be that this does not even require a vote, so if we could just take a moment to, to look at that.
I have had my button pushed since the beginning of this, uh...
Excuse me, I have had my request to speak button pushed since the beginning of the discussion, and I haven't had an opportunity to speak on the...
Yes, and I know that's, unfortunately, there was a, a non-debatable motion that was introduced and seconded.
But I, I think my button request to speak was prior to some of the other people that were...
No, uh, Trustee Fuentes was in before your motion to speak.
Okay.
We looked at this already.
We have, and I think he's right.
Uh, no, I think it requires a vote.
Point, point of order, um, I, I think President Lang, uh, we, we are not required, we can adjust the Roberts rules as this board wishes, and that's very clear. I, I think this is...
That's, that is my recollection as well. Uh, so, again, uh, I am going to push forward.
Yes.
With a vote on adjourning the meeting in accordance with Trustee Fuentes', uh, motion, and I will at this point ask, uh, for a vote. Uh, yes...
A no means...
Yes means that you are supporting the motion to adjourn the meeting. No means you are against that motion.
I...
All right? So please, please vote. Okay, very good. And that motion fails on a four to three vote. Um, motion to adjourn the meeting fails, that is. Uh, so we will continue. And at this point, I would like to recog, well, at this point, again, I am entertaining a motion to extend the meeting until 9:30, and Trustee Padberg's moved.
Second.
And there's been a second to that motion, so we will vote on the motion to extend the meeting.
Nancy, please don't. You're telling me you're voting. This is on TV.
(laughing).
Trustee Jay and our student trustees.
On TV.
All right, and that, uh, motion is approved, so, uh, we will go for it, uh, at this point, at least, uh, another seventeen minutes, and I will recognize Trustee Melchiker.
Thank you so much. Um, I have been interested in hearing the debate here, and I agree, uh, I agree with, um, Mary Williams, that we have to look at the goal. What is our goal of moving forward with this accreditation report to the accreditation team? Our goal is so that we get our colleges accredited. That's our goal. We want to get our colleges accredited. And it is what I believe sincerely that the, um, academic senators and both colleges have been working towards that goal, uh, since, uh, for several years, since, since, um, for, for many years. Uh, and, um, they're trying to make it, make us look good. We should look good because we're wonderful colleges, we're outstanding colleges, and we should be accredited, and we will be accredited. So, I truly don't understand why at this moment... So I truly don't understand why at this moment, the board would want to force the two academic senates, the two, the different constituent groups, at this 11th hour, when they've been working on this for a whole, at least a year, to accept our comments verbatim without any data backing them into their reports. I know that when I first was, many years ago, when I was board president, we had accreditation reports from both colleges, and we had a report from the board of trustees, and I was the board president, so I wrote that report, and I got approval from all the board of trustees. But that was clearly the board of trustees' report, and certainly, I didn't publish it until I sent it to all the board members over and over and over again, and called them, and discussed it with them, and got approval from every single board member. So I think before we send this forward to the colleges, we have to make sure that we get approval from every single board member, that this is what we want. And I think that perhaps there are some things in here that I do not want to be sent forward to the... I know there are some things in here I do not want to be sent forward to the colleges. And I certainly have read both of the accreditation reports and their responses from both the colleges, and met with accreditation teams, and felt we're moving forward to full and complete accreditation that we deserve, that we so well deserve. And I don't understand why we'd want to shoot ourselves in the foot right now by showing disagreement right now and requiring the colleges to put in there that we are disagreeing with their report, and there's actual more dissension than even appears in the report. So please, and also, I would like to know who wrote this report from the board of trustees?
Who wrote the report? It was...
The administration put a draft together and board leadership.
Let me comment on that, two points. One, first of all, both the colleges are accredited. Accreditation is not the issue. Secondly, in terms of writing the report, I worked with my staff in developing a draft of the report, working with the board leadership, and then sending it out to the board on two different occasions to invite input, and we are still open to receiving input from the board members as part of the process. But once we have the report finalized at our level, then we send it to the colleges with the expectation that they will integrate it, as I have clarified it earlier, in their respective reports.
Is there, if the board wants to do their own report, isn't there a place that the board could do their own report and not require the colleges to integrate our response to their report?
Board can do its own report, district can do its own report, or district and the board can do its report, just like the colleges are including the academic senate perspective, classified staff perspective, college administration perspective. There's nothing wrong with the way we are doing it, or we can do it separately. The district can have its own response, and the board can have its own response, or district and the board can provide a joint response.
Trustee Wagner.
Well, trustee Milchiker's comments deserve and certainly cry out for a response. First of all, the bottom line is it's the colleges, not the districts, that are accredited. And so not only is there nothing wrong, but it is entirely appropriate, since the colleges are the accrediting, accredited institutions, and it's the college reports that are complaining about the board of trustees, that it be in the college reports, so the board of trustees set the record straight, at least as the board sees it. Second of all, I take exception to the comment that the statements in the board's proposed response are unsubstantiated. They're not. To a certain extent, they are argumentative, responsive to arguments made by other constituent groups, but we've gone through the documentation that supports the claims, and to say that they're unsubstantiated is simply flat out wrong. And third of all, I agree that we shouldn't submit a report that is not signed off by a majority of the board. That was precisely the purpose that this draft report was sent out to board members several weeks ago on more than one occasion. It's precisely why we're debating it now. So, I mean, you're right. There is an opportunity now for you to say yes or no, or make some changes, or propose some changes, and if they're accepted by the rest of the board, great. You know, if they're not, then, you know, we see what four members of the board decide to do.
Well, I would like to know where our timeline is, because I would like to, I misunderstood what was being sent to us. I misunderstood that... I'm sorry. I somehow didn't get the communication that what we were doing was, we were putting together our own report and asking the colleges to incorporate that in their report. I missed that information somehow, and now that I have that information, I need more time to read the district's response, and perhaps we even need to do a workshop on it and discuss it. If it has to be approved by next month, I certainly think time is of the essence, and we should do, we should all study it very carefully, and we should perhaps have a workshop on it where we could ask questions and certainly make sure this is what we want to do, and make sure our purpose for doing this. What is the reason? What is the purpose? What we expect to gain from requesting the colleges to put this in report? And I'd like to know that myself.
Trustee Padberg.
Trustee Jay just made an interesting comment, sort of under his breath, but I heard it, and that is that individual trustees can certainly file minority reports. Supreme Court does it all the time. Interesting analogy he made. But I think it's very significant that the current board majority, it's no secret who that is, does not involve the board minority in these discussions, and that, for whatever reason, is the fact of the matter. So I would encourage trustees who feel they're not properly represented to file minority report.
Trustee Wagner.
Two quick points. Number one, let me inquire of the chancellor whether this version of the board response that is in front of us now was in fact sent out to all of the trustees or just to your favorites?
First of all...
That's exactly what you said. What you just got done saying was that this was not shared, and that is simply false.
I did not send the response only to the board majority, as trustee Padberg said. I said I was working with the board leadership, and once I had worked with the board leadership, I sent it to the entire board, at least on two occasions, and each time indicating that I'm inviting input and what the process was. And the process that I delineated was, I indicated that I've shared it with the board leadership and worked with them in the development of this draft, and that I invite input so that we can consider and incorporate the input from the whole board, and then bring it here for airing, for discussion and so forth, with the understanding that it'll be included in the colleges' report, as I've indicated before, so that the final report will appear in the integrated form at the September meeting before mailing it out to the commission by October 15th timeline. There is no attempt on the part of anyone that I know of to exclude input from any trustee. We want the input from all the trustees working together on this thing. Trustees as a whole, and the district administration as a whole, and chancellor as part of the district administration have not been treated accurately. On many occasions, in several reports, it was time to set the record straight. I'm sure that if the commission got something wrong in terms of what the colleges may have done or said, the college would do the same, and they have done that. So I think it's only fair that all concerned parties work with each other in a way, that we allow each other opportunity to air and clarify things. There's nothing wrong with that. This is democracy, and we have talked about freedom of speech and freedom of expression and so forth. What's the problem in welcoming different perspectives in a given document? It shows we have a healthy institution, healthy environment in the colleges, a healthy district where different points of views can be aired and discussed, and that will make us better and stronger for the future.
I want to thank the chancellor for that answer to my question. I think I still had the floor. The point, I guess the only point here being with respect to disseminating this information is that the chancellor can send it out to us. Unfortunately, he can't make us read it or administrative policies or any other documents that come out to us in advance.
That's certainly been proven.
The second point that needs to be made is, and a further response to something raised by trustee Milchiker, and maybe a suggestion by her that there's, you know, no place to put our response into these documents, that it's somehow unusual or inappropriate. You know, I just opened the IVC report immediately to page 44, and I see bullet points, headlines, from the faculty perspective, from the administrative perspective, from the classified perspective, and I think this is done in other places in this document. There is absolutely nothing wrong. Indeed, there's the model in front of us. All we're asking is from the board and chancellor perspective. So it's not at all an unusual request.
Trustee Milchiker.
I just wanted to say that I have to be really honest, that I, when I received this, I misunderstood what it was, and now I fully understand what it is. So perhaps it wasn't explained clearly, or perhaps I just didn't read it clearly. I usually read everything I get, but I think when we look at the goal, and I just want to tell our viewing public, there is no danger that we're not going to get accredited. We're wonderful institutions, and there's no danger of that. But if we want to look at the goal of gaining accreditation for our 35,000 students every year, we have to move carefully in what we present. And I think that if we present, I mean, I will consider it, but I think if we present a majority report from the board and a minority report from the board, and a different report from different staff members, it's just going to further show the accreditation team that there's continuing dissension, and perhaps this month, we could work it all out. And as trustee Wagner said, perhaps we could work it out with the different constituent groups and come to some common ground that we could put forward in accreditation response that we all could agree to. And I need more time to actually look at this before I come to a final conclusion from the board of trustees' request to the colleges to incorporate this in their report. I need more time to study it.
Thank you. Trustee Padberg.
Well, clearly, I've been misquoted, and I think the tape will speak for itself. I did not say that this was not disseminated to the board. What I said was the board minority was not included in the actual writing of this. It was sent out after the fact. So I think that's very clear, and if the minority doesn't feel they're being represented, they should state that. So that's my point.
Trustee Williams.
Well, we're getting near the end of our time, but this whole thing about board minorities and people not being notified, we've got a board leadership, and I appreciate everything they do. I mean, this is like one of those old conspiracy theories. I thought we've come a long way since that. I don't care to be involved in the board leadership, been there and done that. I appreciate all the work they do, but I think if we've learned anything tonight, we've learned that all the trustees need to read the material that is forwarded to you. And when you vote to approve, for example, items on an agenda for review and study that are board policy changes, read them. The chancellor sends out several times the board's response to the accreditation, and now people are saying they need more time. Well, how much more time do you need? We've got committees that are working very diligently in all of these issues, and frankly, tonight, you know, as a board member, I'm a little embarrassed because it makes it look like we're not coming to meetings prepared. You're not reading materials the chancellor forwards to you that represent a lot of hard work by these people sitting at the table in front of us, that meet for hours, they draft the documents, they type the documents up, they proofread them among themselves, and they get them to us, and we come to a board meeting acting clueless, like we haven't even looked at it. And we've had things in front of us several times, and people said they need more time to review it, they haven't had a chance to look at it, and some of the stuff we've had for three months. So that's a little embarrassing. As a board member, I'm embarrassed. And we are at curfew in about one minute.
Trustee Padberg.
Yes, I want to just point out that I don't think reading material and coming with your mind made up to how you're going to vote is the way this board should operate. We should have input and discussion, and that's the whole point of our board meetings. So I see that we are one minute away from our finish time. I'll make a motion that we extend it for 15 minutes, the meeting for 15 minutes.
Been a motion made to extend the meeting for 15 minutes. Let's vote on that motion. And again, that is approved on a four to three vote, and I will accept one further comment on this item from trustee Milchiker, and then we will move on.
I think, um, the...
Oh, is that what you wanted to point out? Okay. Yes, Miss Gabriel.
I think that if the colleges are being asked, or let me just do IVC, if the college is being asked to include a district and board perspective in the college report, it would probably be a good idea that the words and the information included represent the board. And from what I'm hearing tonight, and I suspect that this might be the case, from what I'm hearing tonight, what is in this document right now does not reflect the seven-member board. It looks like it might reflect two or three trustees, maybe four, but it doesn't look like it reflects seven. And that's unfortunate for the trustees whose viewpoints are not included, or if this overstates a viewpoint. Also, trustee Wagner, one other thing too, is that the academic senates have the ability to talk to board members by state law. So I can call any one of you that I want to call and talk to you. Also, by the way, so can any member of the public.
Don't complain about that.
And however, in here, it says that when I call, like I called trustee Lang one time in three years, and that's accused of inviting micromanagement. See, that's what I'm talking about, about not substantiating. So trustee Wagner, I would invite you to perhaps meet with me and the other co-chairs of the accreditation report, and look at where we can come up with documentation that would substantiate some of the claims in this document.
All right, very good. I think that that is going to conclude our comments regarding 7.1, and let's move on to 7.2, which is the item regarding security cameras. Yes, Chancellor Mather will present this item.
I would just like to mention that this item has come up at board meetings several times over several years, and especially in light of unsafe conditions existing on several colleges and universities around the country, we felt compelled to study this situation. In light of this, we have gotten some preliminary cost information about the campus safety and security cameras and other matters, and at this point, colleges and the ATEP campuses are evaluating that information. The information that we have received from Honeywell is included here with. And once the colleges and the constituent groups have had the opportunity to review all this, I've asked the college presidents to provide me their recommendation, along with the recommendation from ATEP provost by October 1, to give me some time to assess the recommendation in this regard, and then bring back a final report with an appropriate recommendation to the board at the October meeting.
Thank you. Several trustees wish to speak to this matter. Let's start with trustee Williams.
Well, I'll be brief. I'm the one that originally brought the idea of security cameras to the board via a board report well over a year ago, and never envisioned what would happen at Virginia Tech, so this has really gone well beyond just security cameras, and I think the agenda item identifies that. Now it's safety and security measures. Cameras are a part of it. Each of the three campuses have their own individual needs as far as establishing a system so that our campus police can do their jobs better. I think we're moving in the right direction, and I just want to thank the committees for all of their work in studying this and getting the report to the chancellor. I look forward to doing something to implement a program at each of the campuses so it helps them do their job and keep them safer. Certainly, just recently, the Virginia Tech study panel, their, their recommendations have been released, and it's really, really sobering to read it. You know, the, the cameras are in there, IT is involved, because nowadays, the camera systems are all on an IT system, so there's a lot of bandwidth use, so we need to involve the IT people in this thing. So there's a lot more to it now than we ever anticipated. But I just wanted to thank everyone, and I look forward to a final recommendation.
Trustee Jay.
My only concern, and I know we'll do this, is when we actually get to buying the equipment that'll be done by competitive bid and not, that's Honeywell evidently did this, because we needed somebody to give us some ballpark figures. But I, they're big numbers, and I, you know, I would support the idea, but I just want to be sure it's a typical open bid-type deal. Thank you.
Trustee Padberg.
I would like to suggest that we review, I understand that, and I don't know all about the technology, but the existing satellites that are up in the sky now can provide a lot of security images that are currently available in technology. I would like for us to consider that, and I would also like to have a consultant involved in looking at this possibility, who's not going to end up making money off of selling this kind of a device to us, and someone who doesn't come or isn't selected with a pre-programmed agenda. This report starts out at around $2 million, just under $2 million. And I am sure, as things go, we see this in our agenda all the time, something that's approved at that has an interesting way to creep up and up and up, and whether even conceptually it's the thing to do, I'm not sure. So I'm, I'm wanting much more information about this material.
Yeah, and I, just, just a brief comment. I also had similar concerns about this, both the cost of the proposal, which doesn't include personnel costs, either costs or savings that might, that might occur as a result of this. Obviously, it's, it may be one aspect of a campus safety proposal. There may be other, I guess, possibilities in terms of accomplishing the same objectives, some of which may have been mentioned. So I think there's a lot more work that needs to be done here before I could support, you know, any sort of proposal like this. So, at any rate, that's here for information. We will be receiving additional information back on this topic, and with that, we will move to 7.3, which is our basic aid report. Here for information, and seeing no questions on that, we will move to 7.4, which are, is our facilities plan status report. 7.5 is our monthly financial status report. And I guess the one thing that I would, I guess, like to bring up on that is I, based on everything that is going on down with respect to the treasurer's office and the board of supervisors, I have asked the deputy chancellor for information regarding monies that we have in the county investment fund, and also to look at what our alternatives are, which, since I understand that the, at least the county is going through a similar assessment, I think, and I'll be interested to, you know, hear any comments back from you on that subject. Anything else on, anybody else have any comments on 7.5? If not, 7.6 is our quarterly financial status report. 7.7 is information regarding transfer appropriations at the end of our prior fiscal year. 7.8 is the list of board requested reports. And then finally, there are the list of written reports that have been submitted by our various constituent groups. Okay, we have, what is that, six minutes left. I don't see that we can get through all of that, so I think we will accept the written reports, and I will accept a motion for adjournment. Trustee Williams, there a second?
Second.
All in favor of adjourning? Please raise your hand, please. Opposed? Okay, we've got three trustees, so it carries. Meeting is adjourned.[1743.63]